Thank you all for being here. This is the Monday, November 9th, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting for Radnor Township. We will start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll start by giving notice that we met as a board in executive session on November 5th, 2020, at which we discussed issues dealing with property and personnel. Public participation, anybody who has something they'd like to share with us, please come to the microphone. You will have five minutes. Sure.
Good evening. My name is Martin Costello. I'm commander of American Allegiance Post 418 in Wayne, and I'm here tonight to display some of the new Hometown Hero banners and other banners that'll be displayed throughout Radnor Township, but three in particular. About a year ago, I said that we would get some banners to help support the Emmeline Tenell statue out front, and we finally got them. But I'd like to show them to the people. And one of the reasons we were considering this is I grew up on Garrett Hill. My aunt and uncle lived next to the Tenells, and reading Footsteps of a Giant, which some of you may or may not have not, Emmeline Tenell, who was one of the greatest NFL players of all time, a World War II hero in the Coast Guard, and one of the star players of the Radnor High School Red Raiders. Well, looking at the statue out front, it's absolutely gorgeous, but he's there by himself. And in his book, which I have given to your fellow commissioner, Lisa, you will read the one chapter, The Red Raiders, where he goes into great detail talking about the reason he ended up how he ended up. It was because of his teammates, it was because of his coaches, and it was because of Radnor High School. Back then, even in the paper, when they would redo the accounts of how the Radnor Red Raiders did against all their oppositions, they referred to Emmeline as the Negro Boy. He overcame all of this. This is remarkable, to become the legend, and truthfully so, what he is today in Radnor Township. How many young men from Radnor Township, or any township, ends up in front of a municipal building? It's absolutely gorgeous, and Emmeline is one of those men. But the first one I have here is the 1940 Red Raiders of Radnor High School. And this was the graduating, these teammates graduated in 41. Emmeline was there for an extra year. He graduated in 42. So every one of these members of this 1940 team, and you'll see high school football fields to World War II battlefields, they all served in the military. And two of them didn't come back home, Ray Balone and Charles DeValrio. The other teams that Emmeline played all four years, the other teams that he played on, a number of those teammates didn't come back either. One in particular, Bob Handy, whose Hometown Hero banner is out in front of the field in Garrett Hill. Why can't I remember it tonight? Clem McCrone, thank you very much. That's what happens when you get old. But one of the chapters in the book, which Lisa has, he talks about his teammates, the Red Raiders, and he has a whole chapter about Bobby Handy, who he was on the baseball team with. He played baseball with him all the time. And Mr. Handy was in the Army Air Corps in Italy, where he was killed in action defending the airfield against the Germans. But to read the book, and you'll all read it eventually, you'll understand why that statue is out there and why it's so important for him to be with his teammates. The other one that's going to go up is Jules Prevost. He talks about Coach Prevost quite a bit. And back then, if you were a black kid, you didn't play in a suburban league. But Jules Prevost made that happen. And later on, as you'll see, Mr. Prevost graduated at Radnor in 1920, went on to become All-American at Penn State, and came back to Radnor High School, was a football coach until the late 50s, and he retired in the 60s in the football field sometime in the early 70s, was named after Jules Prevost. And he also talks about his other coaches, Coach Riley and Coach Curtin. And these three banners, the coaches who helped him do what he had to do, are going to be displayed not on poles but on brackets that don't take away any of the view of the statue, nor of the shrubbery, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you very much. We're now at five minutes. I'm sorry to cut you off.
And I'm done. And I just wanted to let you know what's going to happen. We're going to have another six or seven Hometown Hero banners put up through Wayne. And if we forget for a moment, who came before us and why this town is here? This town didn't fall out of the sky. It's the men and women who came back from the wars of our nation who rebuilt this town. Thank you very much. God bless you.
Thank you, Marty, for helping us keep our history and to preserve this history of Radnor. Thank you.
Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue. I have on my Green Team Ready for 100 hat tonight. It's been a long time since you all agreed to award, make the award to Practical Energy Solutions for a transition team. I wanted you to know it has not been forgotten. COVID sort of turned the whole thing upside down. The report is coming up, but tonight I wanted to let you know of an opportunity for the township. There is never a perfect insertion point to start something new in the township. But one of the things we will be proposing is that there be an insertion into SALDO, so that when a development or redevelopment occurs, that certain energy mitigation techniques be included in the SALDO. This is a benefit to the township because it's one way you're meeting your resolution. It's a benefit to, and it also enhances the township's reputation for being forward-thinking. It is a benefit to the developer because they then can qualify for certain awards, certain designations. It's a benefit to the resident who buys the house, let's take it, keep it residential for the moment, because they're going to get tax credits. They're also going to find their, to live there is going to cost less. And interestingly enough, they're finding that houses that have incorporated mitigation techniques, the special new windows, yes, Pella and Anderson do it, Energy Star appliances, yes, Viking does it, special insulation, anything they do, it increases the value of the house on resale because it's seen as a forward-thinking property. So this will come to you quite shortly, and I hope that the Board of Commissioners will at least send it to Planning to discuss this, to get it into the SALDO requirements or offering, or it's a carrot, or however Planning wants to do it. But it is a real step forward in the township being proactive in mitigating climate change. Thank you.
Spine surgery. Kathy Wright, Lenora Avenue, Ward 1. So we watched the October 26th Board of Commissioners meeting with great interest as Commissioner Larkin summarized the ongoing concerns of several of our neighbors who are negatively impacted by the volume of the music that's emanating from Manella's outdoor dining. You all offered various comments and opinions regarding Commissioner Larkin's proposed amendment. We're here to respond and share some personal details. I live toward the end of Lenora Avenue, which is behind the diner and near Conestoga Road. I have, since COVID, I've spent a lot of time on my front porch with my family and friends, getting together with them. And on several occasions, I've had to call 911, the Radnor Police, which I hate doing, and to report hearing the music that's so loud that we can understand the words, and that conversation gets interrupted. Commissioner Larkin cited the West Town Township Noise Regulation at the last meeting, and Tridifferent Township also has a noise ordinance in their Chapter 208 of their zoning code, and that addresses specific A-weighted decibels also. So it seems as though surrounding areas have addressed these noise mitigation, noise pollution, noise ordinances. And so perhaps this time, it's time that our terrible noise ordinance got re-looked at. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Caroline Hummel, Ward 1, Lenora Avenue, and I'm following up on what-
Could you speak a little bit more into the microphone?
Sure.
Thank you.
Want me to kind of move it or just leave it there?
You can feel free to move it.
Okay. Following up on what Kathy just said. Is that better? Okay, good. Okay. And reinforcing the idea that the volume of the music is physically annoying and impacts in our quality of life, three or four nights a week. And it's been going on all summer. And it's definitely not what we, the residents, expect. And the idea of physically annoying, I'm referring to the noise ordinance that's present now and to that 200-1, it mentions that. And then I've made over 20 calls to 911 after the neighborhood meeting with Commissioner Larkin, Chief Flanagan, and Manella's manager. My property is behind Chili's, which is adjacent to Manella's. From my back screen porch to the rear of my property is 100 feet, and I can hear the music clearly. I can, even with the doors closed into my back room, I hear it in the room, and I hear a thumping continually for the three hours that they're there. Several times after I called 911, I received a call back from the township, one of the officers, and I was told that they were aware that we had been trying to resolve this issue, but to no avail. And I was also told to continue to call 911 because that was the only recourse. And if I have a complaint to call, and a warning would be given after one complaint. And after a second complaint, a citation would be issued. This did not reduce the noise level, even though there were many warnings, and I don't know how many citations. I know, I have a record of some of them that were given, but I don't know what happened with them. The officers who responded were appreciative of the issue, as the music could be heard from my front porch where we were talking. We are very thankful for their time and support with this issue. Since Radnor's noise ordinance is from, dates from 1974, and it has been described as a very ambiguous and actually a dumb law, and it seems it's time to update an enforceable ordinance that protects its residents and neighborhoods, as several surrounding townships have done. Thank you.
Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, I will move to the consent agenda. I am going to ask to remove Item D. Is there any other item that another commissioner would like to pull from this list?
Item E. Item F. Item H.
Anything else? Okay, going in alphabetical order. Item 2D, motion authorizing free parking for all of Radnor Township on Saturday, after Thanksgiving, and Saturdays in December. Bill, when we had last talked about this, I thought that we had discussed the possibility of keeping parking free Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, as always, through the end of the year. I wanted to check if that's still something that we can do, or if that's going to be problematic or what?
Yeah, so that's not something that we would object to at all. The reason why the language was drafted up this way is to be consistent with prior years. The board can amend and direct however you see fit, and we would be open to that, obviously, yes.
Okay. That's all I have for Item D. Is there any additional commissioner comment on Item D?
Parking's free at the moment, correct?
At the moment, it is. We are contemplating going back to paid parking on Wednesday. So if this passes as amended, the parking will be free except for Monday, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays.
Okay, so this Wednesday, you'll change the parking requirements?
Yes, and now that's the plan.
Okay. And is there going to be a notice to the residents prior to Wednesday?
The police department is working on that with, yes, right now.
My one thought is, if we're going to charge for parking on Wednesdays, and then it's free Thursday, Friday, Saturday, you're just going to have one day this week that you get charged. Would it make sense just to defer that until the following week at this point?
Yeah, we would amend this motion to begin this week instead of after Thanksgiving then. If you said that earlier, I apologize.
No, that's fine. Is there any reason that you would push back on that? I mean, I know that we get one day less parking money in that case, which-
Yeah, I mean, and this is all, I mean, a difficult conversation. No one's excited about it. We knew back when parking was suspended that no one was going to be excited when the discussions came about trying to return back to some normalcy in that regard. So amending it here to ease it back in on only a few days may make the most sense, and then kind of ramp back up to full after the holiday season into the new year. No issues there at all. So we will support that. If this begins this Thursday, Friday, Saturday, then yeah, we're not going to charge for one day and then have it free again.
Okay, then-
What about the possibility of just extending this through the holidays, the free parking from now to the end of the holidays?
The concern, as I understand it, is that we kind of want a transition period as opposed to January 1st. It was absolutely free, and then slam, you go back to six days a week, you're paying for parking. It's kind of nice to have the transition period. Also, there are voices within that area who have concerns about free parking because people come, they just camp. You have parking increases throughput at restaurants, shops, everything else. So it's kind of a nice middle ground, or at least that was the concept that I had.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. It sounds like a transition would be best.
I will move to-
What's the signage changes that we're going to have in Wayne to so that people, it's clear to them that the parking has changed? What's going to be the notice given on the street?
Well, I'll let Chris update that specifically. I mean, it was going, the signs before this discussion indicated that, well, I'll let Chris go into the details.
And I would also add on to Commissioner Booker's question from Molly, you know, what is the communication plan around this to residents beyond just posting?
The kiosks right now are programmed. They can send messages out. They would be changed. There's a communication plan that would go to the business district. As you said, all the residents, all of our normal postings that would go out, and that's how we would advertise that we're going back. There are signs, as you are aware, on the, what I would call, primary parking, where we're asking people on the honor system to observe two-hour parking. Otherwise, our parking officers are following up with them, even though it has been free. So if you keep abusing that privilege, then in theory, you would be cited after seeing those posted signs, which is not normally the way we do that in the two-hour zone only, if that answers the question.
So basically, the signage that will notify people who are parking in Wayne really will be at the kiosk. There's no additional signs or anything else?
Good evening. The messaging was being developed from the Parking Services Department under Chris's authority, and it was shared with me today. And I will then push it out. So it'll be on all of our social media platforms. It will be on our website. And then I communicated directly with the WBA. So normal, normal protocol in terms of communications.
Right, but my thought mainly is for the casual user of downtown to make sure that they might have gotten used to going in and not paying and not notice it, especially if maybe they don't even bother to go to the kiosk, right? So that's my question. Will there be anything on the street, anything in the windows? Because not every, believe it or not, not everybody checks the website or gets the township emails. I know it's hard to believe.
Are you one of them, Rich?
No, I get inundated with township notices and other propaganda. Go ahead.
Well, I'm going to move to amend Item 2D to provide for for-pay parking on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays through the end of calendar 2020, going back to regular six-day for-pay parking beginning January 1st of 2021, all to commence on November 16th of 2020. Did I get that right?
Oh, can I just ask one more question? It's still, but it's still free after 6:00, correct? Just as it always was?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a second to the motion to amend?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, all opposed? Motion to amend passes unanimously. Is there any additional commissioner comment on the amended Item 2D? Is there any staff comment?
Just, I would like to see some kind of sign or some notice because we're going to end up with people complaining that they didn't know.
That's fair. Is there any staff comment on the amended Item 2D? I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Amended 2D passes. Item 2E, Resolution Number 2020-129, authorizing the execution of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Keystone Communities Program for the Fenimore Woods Park renovations.
I pulled this one because I wanted to get a status of what the project is for Fenimore Park, just a brief description for the public. And we've gone through several iterations, so I just wanted to find out where we are on and what the main components of the plan are that are going to be part of this grant, and if this is covered by the bond funds that have been borrowed to date.
Commissioner, I can give that update. Yes, this project is a comprehensive project for Fenimore Woods, a long-awaited project, of course, and does entail the funding from the borrowing from 2015. It's going to include a demolition to the existing stable building that's on site that is in severe degradation right now, as I'm sure people who live in that area have seen. It's going to include the redo of both parking lots, the upper and the lower parking lots. There will be the addition of a walking path that will permeate through the park. It'll also include renovations to the pavilion, which will include a new bathroom building, of course, replacing what's going to be taken away from the stable building. The renovation of the playground, which will include a new playground, as well as the walking path that circulates the lower portion of the park and the trail. It'll be, with regard to ADA, throughout the entire park, and will also just include overall tree replantings and stormwater management right now, which is severely needed at the park as well. So this is a grant that'll go towards that, that overall cost once that, once we understand it, of course, once the project goes to bid. So in hopes that this will defray some of that.
What's planned for the pond, anything? And the walk path is not going around the pond. We talked about that at one point, but that's not included in this?
It is included. The walking path around the pond in the bridge that leads over to the pond will be included in this. The walking path will be a crushed stone material, unlike it is now, which is really just the dirt and a lot of, there's a lot of recession that's going on around the pond, so a lot of that is going to be corrected. There are a lot of, there's a lot of root, tree roots that have eroded. A lot of that is going to be filled in and regraded so that it's, you know, it's safer and more easy to navigate for visitors. So that part of the project will be included.
Is there aeration for the pond or other measures for the pond to stop with the algae, or is that not part of this?
The only thing that's part of the pond itself is the installation of, there's going to be fountains, I believe three of them, that will be installed, similar to what we did over at the Willows, to keep the circulation and the flow moving through. That will help with a lot of that, but-
That'll be, that'll help aeration.
It will.
And what, how much is the grant versus how much is from the fund, from prior funding?
So this particular grant is for $50,000. This is an earmark from the DCED, so we are pretty confident that we can get this. But the project is in the ballpark of about $2 million. And that money has been earmarked in the bond that took place in 2015 for parks and trails. So this is one of the last projects of that extensive bond that we're working on related to parks.
Thank you.
Is there any additional comment? Hearing none, I will move for Item 2E. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item 2E passes unanimously. Item 2F, Commissioner Booker.
Resolution 2020-130, authorizing the execution of a grant application to Exelon Corporation for the purchase of charging stations. Can we get some background on this and where charging stations are planned and how much the grant is for? And is the charger station for the general public or for the township use?
Can I answer all that real quick, sir? Good evening, everyone. As a part of the Office of Emergency Management, my job is to come up with different ideas to mitigate issues that come into play here in the township. Came across a company. So basically, we have extensive power outages in our area, specifically in different neighborhoods. This year alone was due to severe thunderstorms, but we have issues in terms of ice and snow. It'll bring power lines down, and then Pico will have to come out, and they'll have to fix a lot of issues. And therefore, certain neighborhoods are down for extended periods of time without power. Thought would be, how can we get those people assistance in charging their devices, not only so they can just have a phone to play with, but so they can call 911, they can call their loved ones, so they can reach out to their insurance companies to start their claims, and also so they can contact contractors. So normally, what we do is we ask the folks to come here to the township building. We provide them a warming space as well as the ability to charge their devices, which is basically all they ever want to do, is so they can contact everybody they want to get in touch with during that time. COVID-19 actually restricted us further, so as opposed to having the group of folks we could have in this room, we were only to have, allowed to have about 26 tops. So we'd have to rotate folks in and out. We have to clean the space and make sure everybody's safe. So I took a different approach, and I found a company that is based out of Baltimore, Maryland, and they create a charging station. So the charging station is basically a high-top table. It has the ability to charge multiple devices at one time, and we would take that charging station to that neighborhood. So Commissioner Borowski's neighborhood, twice this year alone, we had to have folks come here to do what they needed to do to charge their devices. So what we asked to do is to purchase two of these charging tables, and that way, we can use our police trailer that we already have. We have generators as well. We can run power out to those tables, and we can designate it to a certain neighborhood for maybe two hours at a time. We take it to a different neighborhood and help those folks out. So this is an example of the charging table looks like. It has nine charging cables that are in various types. Some folks have Androids, some folks have Apple phones. And if you notice at the top, there's wireless charging pads, which is where we're going in the future for all cell phones, six USB ports, three standard outlets, so folks can use their laptops, the wireless aspect. And it also comes with a battery, so if our generator goes down for some reason, if we need it in certain streets, we can power this charging table for 12 to 16 hours. hours at a time. We would also purchase what's called a cradle point and a hotspot, giving people access to wireless internet, since their systems are down powered by electricity, thanks to their power outage. And with all this, the systems are ready for the future, so 5G capability as well as those wireless charging pads. I approached PICO about this, since this is something that we could probably work together about. They love the idea. They offered to apply for a grant through their program. The grant would be for $7,500 on PICO's end and $2,500 on our end. The total project's $10,000, so we would have to purchase the two tables from Baltimore, Maryland, from the power-up company, and then we would have to purchase the cradle point and hotspot, so we can give power to the Wi-Fi aspect of the program. And that way, folks can have access to calling their loved ones, calling 911, most importantly, when there's no power to their device, because nobody really has a landline anymore, as well as calling their contractors and their insurance companies. And most importantly, it goes with our goals of providing the best service possible to our community members.
So where are we going to put, don't these have to be indoors, under, under?
No.
This is going to be outdoors in, in the weather?
We can take it outdoors when it's not raining. So if we have that, we also have, our mix-app truck has an awning, we can place it underneath that, and folks can come to us.
Is there any locking mechanism on that for a person who could leave a device and go handle some other business?
No, we expect them to stay with us.
Stay with them.
So that way, we also have a positive interaction between our community and, and our folks.
Okay.
There's, there's only two that you're getting, only two?
Uh, well, at the cost of $8,000 for two of them, that's the best we could do at the moment.
But we could have need for a dozen of them if it's, if it's really bad.
That's why we'd have to move along and along and along. But it's an idea to help where we can for now.
Did, did we look at the CARES Act for this project?
Well, I don't know if the funding would actually cover that due to COVID-19. So this is just an idea for a regular extended power outages for.
But, but, but it has a, it is tied to COVID-19 because you don't want people inside the building, so you want to be outside.
Right.
So there's a, there's a direct correlation with COVID-19.
You're correct, sir. But we wanted to be, beside that, we wanted to help in general. But you do have a good point, it is part of that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's worth at least submitting it and seeing if it's funded.
Yes, sir.
My, my neighborhood also has quite a few power outages, and I think I've talked with Bill and Steve and others about this. And so I think that this is a good thing, but seems like two's not the number, that maybe five would be the number, one that each, it seems like you should put it at an elementary school or something. Where, where would, what's the proposal for where we would put these in the neighborhoods?
What?
I mean, in other words, what, wouldn't we put it like at each school, maybe? One, high school, elementary schools, and the township, or some kind, some, something like that, right?
As a starter program, we would actually just take it to the neighborhood that has the issue, and then we'd move to another neighborhood if need be. PICO does work very hard to get everything with the power back on, so this is like a partnership kind of thing. PICO love the idea, it's never been done before, where we would actually take power service to the people who were affected while they did their repairs.
Yeah.
So just, Sergeant, how are you going to let people, how are you going to let people know that this is the case? It's like when they make an announcement when the power's out, right? Like, so I mean, maybe you saw, you have a little bit of battery life on your phone left, can you see it? But how would someone?
So we would actually know where the outages are, and if we know through PICO, that's going to be an extended period of time, which they usually do let us know. We would go out there, and we would have our lights on, we can go door-to-door and let folks know they can come out to us.
Okay. And then the other question is, and I think it's great, I think it's, it's a great face of the township. I'm looking at, so the price would be 8,000 per, per table?
No, no, so for two of them, it's $8,000.
So it's 4,000? I, I'm just wondering if this is the best use of money. I know that a lot of people, like in BOPRE, like they charge some of their devices in their cars, obviously you don't want to do that. You'll wear your, your battery down, but could running a generator and just having, for lack, and again, I don't want to, I know that you worked hard on this, where you had a couple of extension cords and power strips that they could charge some stuff up with, that'd be a much, much cheaper route. I, I understand that you want to, I understand the good that this can do, I'm just looking that we are in some real tight budget constraints right now, and I'm looking at $8,000, and so I'm just throwing this out there and just asking for your.
Right, so it would be 75%. The project would be covered by PICO for 75%, so $7,500. We would pay $2,500.
So we'd only pay $500 for?
$2,500.
We pay $2,500 for two. Okay.
So I, I think this is actually a wise use of, of township funds, and to Commissioner Booker's point, not sure why we're only going after two here, and think we should be looking at more. So, you know, if we're going to submit a request through, for the CARES Act through the county, I, I think we probably try for five or six. And I don't, and, and to your point, I don't think you even need to go into the neighborhoods, I think you go to the nearest park, and my, my experience is when power's out, word-of-mouth, you know, it travels, and people will know where they have to go. So, I mean, you're, you're not going to have to go and tell people, knock on doors. We, you know, you come charge your phones down at the park, somebody in that neighborhood's going to know, and they're going to tell their neighbors. So I, you know, I, I think this is a great idea. Thanks for bringing this forth. I just think we probably need more, to Commissioner Booker's point.
So.
My question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
Officer Glock, thank you, this is, is a great idea. You did mention my ward, you know, Fourth Ward doesn't have to seem luxurious as all of the other wards where they have a big park that you can go to. So I think the idea of bringing them into neighbors, neighborhoods is a good idea. You know, the last time that we had a significant outage, I think we had people that were out for five or six days, and we did have a lot of neighbors who did just that, put out a power strip and let people come to their homes. I know, you know, I had offered people, we have a small generator, powers the TV, thank goodness, and a refrigerator. But, you know, and people are very generous and share, and I think that this would be, I think these are, would be very useful. You know, our neighborhood does experience a lot of power outages. Yes, BOPRE is one of those neighborhoods in Fourth Ward that experiences a lot of power outages. So I think it's worth a shot. I think you should definitely go for it, and if we get it, then we can certainly look to expand it. You know, I, I do know to Commissioner Abel's part, Commissioner Abel's comment, the, the county is looking for money to spend, there is CARES dollars, I don't know if this would qualify. I guess my only other question is, what if it is, you know, freezing cold out? I know at one point, our ward was out of power many places in the township for several days when we had the ice storm, maybe three, four years ago, we had a really bad ice storm. You know, would, would it be better for them to be in the building and people to come? And the township has always been so generous of opening up the building and letting people come in here to also get warm, because there's also that issue? Is it possible they could be inside at some point?
By all means, we still wouldn't have access here.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
But there are times when folks can't make it because they're elderly or for other reasons, we don't know, but we would take it to them just to help them out.
Okay.
But yes, absolutely, we can still use this.
I think it's a great idea, if it's a grant, and it only costs us $2,500 bucks, let's go for it. So thank you.
Appreciate it.
Officer Glock, my question was around staffing. You mentioned, you know, the need to take truck generators out there into the neighborhoods and stuff. Are we talking about additional staffing, additional hours incurred over time, or?
What we would do is get the emergency under control first.
Yep.
And then if there's two officers or one officer available, they would take the vehicle with the trailer and the charging stations to that location.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there's no additional commissioner comment, I will move for item 2F. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Item 2F passes unanimously. Moving to item H. Resolution Number 2020-131, authorizing the execution of a grant application for the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grant Program for the creation of a floodplain along Gulf Creek to reduce severe flooding in the North Wayne area of the township. Commissioner Booker.
My question on this is, is the grant application premature? I don't know that we've had a lot of discussion or outline of this proposed plan. Last I heard, it was still discussions with the neighborhood, so I wanted to get a status of the project, the status of the scope of work, and a update on the support in writing by the neighbors to proceed with this.
So Commissioner Booker, the Engineering Department has met with approximately 70% of the affected homeowners. So these would be the homeowners, the residents that live along Gulf Creek where the floodplain would be created. That 70% has been very positive along that entire area. We did hit a very slow period during COVID when there were very few meetings, actually none. They've picked up again. So we're hoping to wrap this up in the next couple of months, but it is not premature because the design has been put forth. We will run our final model based on the, how many people we get involved with this, and at this point, it looks like it's, it's going to be a great deal. So yes, I, I would recommend applying for this grant. It's for $3 million with a 25% match. There is no direct fiscal impact or financial obligation at this time to author the execution of the grant application. We're just asking to apply for the grant, and it will be done internally. And I'll tell you, Melissa Khan has done a lot of work on this, so I'd like to just shout out to her. But yes, we should move forward. That is my recommendation, sir, to move forward.
Do we have the 70% in writing that they agree that they will allow this? Do we have anything in writing, or is this verbal?
So the, the folks that we've met with have said they, you know, they will sign, so I, I have no concern of the conversion of the verbal approvals to written approvals. It's for everybody in North Wayne. This specific project is for the, the benefit of those folks that live along that creek and those that don't in that area. So everybody's been on board with this, or the vast majority has been on board.
I don't recall seeing any drawings. Have you sent out drawings on the, on this? Last I heard, we were doing surveys to get the topography.
Well, early on, when this started, we did show the floodplain creation draft, which was along the entire section of Gulf Creek. We did show that to the board.
Right, it was like an aerial view and, and an outline of where it was, but.
Correct.
Is, are there any drawings or any? So first, we need to get existing, and then we would need to have topographic contours drawn to what the proposed would be, anything like that?
That's been completed for many months. So we have the existing topo, proposed topo, and what we're meeting with residents on is what, what their yard would look like based on this project. So we do have the proposed contours. And we meet with them, and we basically have a sheet for their property, which shows the limit of disturbance on each property.
Could I get, could I see that, yeah, overall?
Absolutely, sir.
Any additional commissioner comment?
So just to be clear, there's no, no cost to the township on this?
Not to apply, Commissioner.
Okay.
Other than we have to prepare the application.
And that, that is being done internally by staff. Again, a lot of work by Melissa Khan.
Okay, I will so move for item 2H. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to one. I will move for the approval of consent agenda items 2A, B, C, G, and I. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving to item 3A. Two conditional offers of employment for two Radnor Township Police Officers filling vacant positions from 1/2019 retirement and 1/2020 retirement. I will so move, is there a second?
Second.
Chief, if you want to let us know about this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Township Police Departments pleased to announce that candidate number one, Kyle Pop, and candidate number two, Richard Braxton, have successfully completed all the phases up until the conditional offer of employment. For those from the community who are not aware, we give a conditional offer to fill two vacancies from retirements in 2019 and 2020. The conditional offer will then allow them to go for a medical and psychological. As you know, they have to pass both of those as well before being offered a formal offer of employment, once they successfully pass that. This is a formality to start that process.
Commissioner comment?
Uh, well, I have a comment if nobody else. So what's the budget impact on this? It says retirements from '19 and '20, so that means that there is no budgetary impact or the fact that this retirements were put into the budget, and therefore there is a budgetary impact?
Commissioner, I can answer that the retirements are budgeted. These are two full-time positions that have been included in the budget. So these are simply refilling two retirees with two new hires for the 2021 budget. And was existing for the 2020 as well.
So you're saying that you had the funds anticipating that these spots would be filled by new employees in the budget?
That is correct.
And because these are younger people versus the older, higher-paid people, was there a savings in that, in the budget?
Well, the, the budgeted amount accounts for a new officer.
At the lower rate. What, as we've discussed, significant, significant number of times, we'll have a budget deficit because of reduced business, budget, mercantile tax revenues. Why wouldn't we hold off on this until we go through the budget and understand the, the deficit and what our priorities are?
I'll, I'll jump in real quickly on that, Commissioner. With regard to anticipating or planning for 2021, which is the year that the primary cost of these officers will impact, there'll be virtually no impact for 2020 by the time we get through the process. The budget documents and the budget numbers that have been distributed to the board include a full complement of police officers, up to the 45 officer limit. So these two positions are included in that. With regard to continuing to hold off on hiring these positions, we understand that there has been an economic impact to our revenues. We've, we've discussed that in our budget meetings, we're aware of that. But at the end of the day, the township's required to, to provide police service, or we have established a, a level of police service. And having a full complement of officers able to do that will allow us to best deliver that service with the, with the resources we have. So, you know, while the, the COVID situation has impact us, impacted us financially, operationally, we're still required to provide service, and that's what this conditional offer and filling these two vacancies are aimed at doing.
I just.
Dale, I have a question.
Before, before, I would remind everyone that when, we, we used to go with, we had 41 for the first four years that I was in, as Commissioner. So 44, 45 versus 41, it's not a matter of staffing, it's a matter of what do, what do we feel is the applicable level? And we have done it with less in the past, so I'd remind everyone of that.
Bill, do you think this is, will this affect how much we're paying in overtime to the current officers? Will it relieve some requirement for overtime?
Yeah, I'll let the, the chief describe anything in real great detail, but, you know, the, the way the police department is staffed, you have different platoons with certain numbers of officers. Right now, there's two vacancies in those platoons, this will refill those. To the extent officers were needed to make a platoon whole, then yeah, I mean, chances are, we're bringing somebody in, and it is costing overtime. I'm not going to go and say that that's happening every time, because I just don't have that information in front of me, but anecdotally, when you have a staffing shortage based on the way that your department is scheduled, yeah, it, there are some costs in that. And over the period of time, there's, there's only so much overtime someone can work. It's not an unlimited resource, so. The, the township staffing at 45, that decision was made some years ago. There, there have been times, to the Commissioner's point, where we have been lower than that, but it's usually because of retirements or, you know, well, almost always retirements. And there's just periods of time where we, where And there's just periods of time where we, we're operating below that, but the goal is always to refill them. And it, it takes the time going through the, the process to update the list and do it correctly. So at the end of the day, that, the amount of staffing that has been approved through the organizational charts and discussions through the years has been 45. We've been at 43 now for the past eight to nine months, even one less for a year and a half, and this would bring us up to the full complement of 45.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Every private business is laying people off. Many people are going out of business. Many people don't have jobs and are cutting back, and I think that we should reciprocate.
Not sure that a rise in unemployment is a good reason to stop hiring police officers, but.
The point is, is that everybody has, has to deal with the shutdowns caused by COVID. And the shutdowns are having a huge impact on many businesses and many jobs. And everyone is spending less and I think that we should join and show, show that we can do that as well. Stretch.
Can I just ask, so Chief, with regards to finding the right candidates, I know that that has been something that, you know, you guys have been trying, been doing and looking to do. I mean, the right candidates don't come along all the time. They don't come along every time you advertise for them. So can you just speak to that a little bit right now? I mean, I'm going to say that if you're making these two offers, that these two gentlemen have, you know, more than satisfied what you're looking for. And we still have two more steps, it sounds like, to go through for them. So, you know, I know we've talked a lot about this and we were just talking about it prior. You know, the struggles to find the right candidates. And I think that if we have two candidates right now, that it behooves us to do what we can to, to keep them and maintain them and make sure that we are properly, properly staffed because the work doesn't go away and the need is, is still. I was speaking with residents today. There's, the need is great, so. Could you speak to that just for a little bit, Chief?
Yes, ma'am. A couple of factors come into play. Just to remind the audience and the commissioners that we have an established list from our civil service board. Those lists generally expire within two years. So as you can see, we have one retirement from 2019. And really, by the time that officer would be able to start working on their own, in other words, in a police car by themselves, after our very extensive internal process, would be in 2021. That's how long, when all of these things have to line up from expired lists, hiring practices, other things. You are right, there is, there is a shortage nationally of police officers interested in even taking tests or applications. Standards across the country are being lowered significantly. Incentive plays are being put into trying to coax individuals to come to respective police departments, whether it's a one police department, or I'm sorry, one officer town to a huge city. They're doing anything they can to increase recruitment. The timing of this list worked out well, being responsible with the needs of the township, timing the list correctly with two graduating classes from our local community college, police academies. It allows us, we have two top candidates who have outstanding backgrounds, distinguished military careers, and we're excited to put them on. In the same breath, there's many other eager police departments that want candidates like this. So the timing of all those factors I just mentioned, it is, I feel, important time to move forward. As you know, with the size of our department, there are issues that come up, family emergencies, other things. We have two officers on leave of absent right now for very justified means, where it means they're not able to, they have to be with their family to assist with situations, and of course, we wish them well. But it allows us to have more depth. And to Commissioner Maloney's question, I do believe it has a direct effect on our very low overtime budget. Mr. White, Mr. Tate, keep a keen eye on those items and they're checked on. So we do keep an eye on overtime, but this will allow us to have less overtime by having officers, once they're certified, to go out on their own.
Thank you.
Chief, just to that point, so the discussion around the civil service and recruitment issue was to be able to get the top candidates from that class. Do we know where these two candidates ranked in their respective classes?
I'm sorry, sir, you mean in reference to where they were at a police academy?
Yeah.
I have their main files. I do not have them with them. I can get that answer. I don't know if we get a list of how each academy posts their candidates differently. It's generally a pass fail from the standards provided by MOPAC. I do not believe they prioritize them. Where they get prioritized through a number ranking is through our battery of, of testing and physical agility, written test and oral exam, where the civil service board then does put them in a sequential numeric order.
Okay, and so, so for these two candidates, you've met that requirement that we discussed where you wanted the top candidates in your ranking?
Yes, sir. So again, I don't, I think there's only one top award for top scholastic in most of the local academies. I can't answer for all the way across the state. However, for here, this is candidate number one and number two on our civil service list.
And to Commissioner Booker's point, I tend to agree during these, during this time period. I'm not crazy about bringing on new hires, but we did have this discussion several months ago, two months ago, I think. And we voted to continue this process. So I think, I think it's important that we follow through on it, that we bring these two individuals on because that was the discussion that we had at the time was we wanted to have, we wanted to provide the chief and the civil service with the criteria needed to find their top candidates and bring them into the force. So for that reason, I will support this resolution.
Do these new candidates offer any new diversity for the police force?
They bring new skills and new ideas and new backgrounds to the police department.
I was asking about race, race or ethnicity, creed, any, do they, do they add any diversity?
Commissioner, I'm unable to comment on that because I would be making an assumption by just looking at them.
Well, I think that it speaks a lot to this board and to Radnor. When everyone says that people want to defund the police, we're going to add some more officers. We want to keep everybody safe, our constituents, as well as the people, the police, that risk their lives every day to keep the community safe. So I am for this and even the notion of kind of not being for it, I think is fairly disappointing to hear, to be honest with you. But I think that it's important that we maintain a, a, a good police force and with good morale so they can protect us as they've been doing. Thank you.
My comments are very simple. I'm in support of this simply because we've agreed to it, as Commissioner Abel pointed out. And we are not hiring additional officers to correct Commissioner Farhi. We are, in fact, going back to the level that we agreed upon previously and filling two vacant positions. So I'm for it.
And I think all of us, I especially, would, would never say defund the police. I would never divert funds and support the police. As a matter of fact, I had back the blue signs in my yard, you know, for the last several months. And I fully want to fund and support the police. However, like all businesses, all businesses have had to contract. Many businesses are laying people off. And the only business, only, only government doesn't seem to be tightening its belt. And I think that that is, doesn't set the right example. And that we should make every effort to reciprocate what the community's doing.
Commissioner Booker, I'm just going to suggest that there is not a less of a need for police, depending on whether somebody is at work or at home. So to ensure that we are at full complement, that those who are trusted professionals have determined the needs to, in order to serve our residents and citizens, I am also going to vote for this.
Okay, now that we've all told.
Mr. President, just.
Okay.
So Chief, just, just to clarify, while we've been at 41 personnel, the township hasn't been less safe?
I want to be careful of the numbers. I would prefer not to get into a number scenario of 41 versus 43 versus 45. The township manager and I had a discussion and we, we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page of that. But what I would say is that, Commissioner, to answer your question very specifically, township residents and businesses always come first in our mind. There's never been a deficit in police policing. There may be shifts in some of what the extra duties we do or some of the stop signs we monitor or some of the other things, which are very important to our residents. But we always make sure that the primary beats that cover every inch of the township are covered to optimize our police response.
Now, I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to one. Item 3B, resolution number 2020-105, Eastern University, three temporary trailers, waiver of land development.
Commissioner, you may recall that the Eastern University was at a few, here a few meetings ago. The board specifically asked them to try to communicate with the surrounding neighbors. They're here to report on that. And the, they're requesting waivers from the land development process as well as stormwater management, since the trailers are going to be placed on existing impervious surface. And I'll let them take it from there.
Got it. Before you guys jump in, so that I don't forget later on, I will move in favor of item 3B. Is there a second? Okay, guys, take it off.
What, what, what was that? I don't understand what?
I opened the motion. There was a second. These guys are going to give us a presentation. Afterwards, we're going to have some questions, I assume, from the commissioners. Might have questions from staff. Public will then participate and then we'll vote.
Why did you say that you were going to approve?
I said move.
Move, oh, move, okay, okay.
All right, good evening and thank you again for having us. My name is Eric McNelly. I'm the director of athletics at Eastern University. And as was mentioned earlier, at our last meeting, I was asked to contact some of our neighbors that would, could be potentially impacted by this. Some of the steps we took, we had a certified letter mailed out on October the 9th, shortly after our meeting. In this letter, we include plans, site plans, and then also invited the neighbors to a Zoom session on the, on the 20th. It was not well attended. I found out later why. I went door to door on the 23rd to the four properties that are in question. And I'll let our engineers discuss why they were selected. I was able to make face-to-face contact with three of our neighbors. One neighbor was not home. They had quite a few boxes in front of their house from Amazon. The letter was placed right in front of the front door and included plans as well. Had some correspondence back and forth via email with one of the neighbors. And they indicated that this certified letter did come on the 27th of the month, which was very disappointing to find out. And they did say that they, you know, if it wasn't well attended, that was the reason why. They indicated that they not only got the letter for themselves, but also for their neighbor. Outside of that, there was one request for a placement of one of the trailers to be moved further away from the street, closer to the pool, which would be our restroom trailer, to be a little further from the street. I confirmed with our vice president for plant operations if that could be done. He agreed and we had no problem making that adjustment to the plan.
If you have anything else you want us to know, I'm going to open the floor up for questions.
Hi, Brendan Dooley from AEC. Like Eric alluded to, we contacted four neighbors in the Fenimore and Fairview area. And that is these four in this, in this stretch here because those are the neighbors that are closest to the entrance and the parking lot.
And can you briefly talk about?
Can you, go ahead. I was going to say, can you, can you brief us on the results? So four neighbors, you verified that all four received, you said that.
I had face-to-face comments.
You had face-to-face comments. Can you brief us on what those comments were in those discussions? Opposition, folks that were for it, folks that didn't care? What was the result of those conversations?
The Edmonds family on the 23 Fairview, excuse the address. The wife was home, Mrs. Edmonds. She had no problem. She said there wouldn't be an issue whatsoever. Her husband sent the email correspondence back and forth with the concern about the placement of the trailer and then did acknowledge when they received the certified letter. Obviously disappointed that the letter came so late, but did inform me they, that's why they weren't able to get on that Zoom. The homeowners on 7 Fenimore, she was home. I explained briefly what the project was for and why we were doing it strictly because of COVID, trying to keep our campus safe. She said she talked to her husband, didn't see a problem. She did not reach back out. I haven't heard anything from the family. And then 27, I'm sorry, Fairview, the Packers, the daughter answered the door. Did not speak with the homeowners. I believe they were home, but the daughter answered the door. I handed the letter to her, briefly explained what was going on, and that was where it was left.
Do I get the sense that we're going to hear rebuttal from you guys when we're done? Excellent, okay. You guys will get a chance to come up and say your piece. I just want to make sure you know that. Great, go ahead.
Yep, and that, that was it with those three, and then the fourth neighbor was not home. And I haven't heard any correspondence from them.
When, when we last talked about this, what I had suggested is that we do like some balloons or some, have a test because we said that these are 40-foot trailers, 10 feet high. I wanted to make sure that they weren't going to be visible, not just from, it looks like you're talking, you talked to the folks that are on Fairview Drive or Fenimore. But what about the cul-de-sacs that are shown in your drawing right there along the bottom side? So it looks like that's Cornwall and a couple of others. Will, will anybody be able to see this down, looking from their yard?
No, no one from the south side of the property will be able to see through about 800 or 900 feet. And I know wintertime, the leaves drop, but it's still 800 or 900 feet of, through the property. And there are some buildings in the way as well. But it's unlikely that anybody on Cornwall or Houston will be able to see that far and see these trailers.
So I, I do have comments, but I want to wait and hold them until actually we hear what the residents say. So I'm going to kind of withhold them. I know it's a little bit out of order, but I do want to hear both sides. And I feel that that's how, maybe this board, but at least how I can make the most informed decision.
So you showed.
We're talking about a period for one year, not to exceed one year, correct, per the resolution?
As soon as we can get them off as well.
All right.
So you just showed us a satellite view. Why, what's, what is the significance of the satellite view you're just showing us right there?
The significance of the satellite view is showing the, the amount of tree mass on the property that buffers the Houston and the Cornwall neighbors from seeing the location of the trailers all the way in the, that part of campus. Now also on Fairview Drive is a row of arborvitae that provide a nice screen from the houses on Fairview as well. As well as a nice buffer of trees where it says trailers on that, that are, the trails will be right behind.
And, and so we didn't do any balloons? We didn't put up anything to actually outline the 10-foot by 40-foot? And then, and then look at that?
No, we did not. I also did 3D renderings from Google Maps, just the same. I think you're more interested in the Cornwall and Houston. But as you can see from the Cornwall side, there's a decent amount of trees right behind. The trailers will be tucked in behind that, that area of trees and you can barely see the parking lot.
Understood, understood. Can we, Ian, can we zoom in? Can you put that, hold on, can you move that to the center? Okay, so there's Cornwall circle and it's, you have to look across, you know, past those other houses across the pond there.
There's a dorm here and there's a row of about thirty or forty-foot arborvitae.
Right.
That are blocking that already. And then beyond that, you're looking through several rows of dense trees.
What about Houston to the right of that in this picture?
Same thing. You can barely identify some of the campus buildings, but the trailers are tucked way back here. And it's really impossible to even identify that there's a campus beyond there with the amount of trees. Because there's a pond right here, but there's all the trees right above it. And that's, I think, nine hundred feet from the property line is that trailer location.
And what about Fairview Drive and Fenimore? They'll be able to see it presumably. They'll be able to see these, right?
Well, on Fairview, right along this stretch of Fairview is a dense row of arborvitae as well. While there are deciduous, there is evergreens along this stretch. Now, I would say at Fenimore, since the driveway basically comes in almost in line with Fenimore, there may be an opportunity to get a glance, but they're also tucked behind this area where the bridge is to get into campus. So I don't think they won't be visible, but I don't think they will be obvious, much like the gym or any other dorms on campus.
Right, but these are trailers though. These are, and they're temporary. So it looks like there's, it looks like there's a couple of houses there along Fenimore, which will be, which will have a view of this.
Yeah, this, I think this is Page, McGory, Packer, and Edmonds. These are the four houses that we contacted.
So what I'd like to do, rather than asking you two to come up for public comment, which creates some procedural issues for us because we can't really answer your questions and we can't have conversations afterwards. I'd like to suggest, unless there's additional Commissioner questions for you right now, why don't you two come up? You can give us a brief, from your body language, I suspect will be a rebuttal. And then you guys can give us a very, very brief reply afterwards. Then if we have any additional comment, we can do that. We can do public comment. We can do staff comment and we can wrap this up with a vote. Shoot.
Can you just reiterate for us who are here, the reason you want three trailers on a temporary basis on the campus in that parking lot, please?
Yes, ma'am. So the NCAA has pushed all of our athletic teams to participate starting in January in the new year. So it's twenty-one teams we'd have to accommodate for. Our dorm rooms in any building is shut down from anybody from the public to come in. That includes the visiting teams. So we're trying to find locations for those visiting teams that can keep our campus safe, our envelope safe. We have weekly testing lined up between PCR and agitant, I can't speak right now, three tests to make sure that our athletes are safe. There's four hundred of them and if I can limit exposure, I'm going to do it.
Are you guys still competing?
Right now, we're just practicing and training.
No, in January, is the schedule still to go forward?
Still to go.
Is there another milestone where there will be a decision made?
As of right now, the NCAA still says we're moving forward. We're working on the testing protocol. That's what I just referred to. I wish I could have an answer for you. So one last question. If this board approves these trailers this evening, come January, come February, the NCAA tells you that you are not playing any time in the coming, you know, foreseeable future, including twenty twenty-one. I'm sorry, I'm trying to remember what year we're in. It's been such a mind meld. The NCAA tells you you're not playing in twenty twenty-one, at least through the fall. I'm assuming that those trailers will be removed. A hundred percent. Okay. There's. We have your commitment on that, that they'll be removed within a reasonable amount of time, meaning, you know, days or a few weeks, not months, in terms of compliance on that. Hundred percent. Okay.
Any additional Commissioner questions now?
So just to piggyback on that point, the spring sports will end sometime, I would assume, April. And then they'll start back up, they'll start back up again August, September. Will the trailers remain up for those, for that period in between?
Right now, I'm looking at three-month intervals with the contract, so as long as I can secure them and bring them back, I have no problem getting them off campus.
Sorry, one more of this question then I'll, just a logistical. So when does the clock start? Today or does the clock start for that one year? Or does it start the first day that they're there?
Well, January one's when competition would start, so really I just need to get them there. So as far as the clock, I would hope it'd be a calendar year starting January one.
So it'd be January one and they'll be removed, not relocated, but removed off your property, January one, two thousand twenty-two? I'm with you. Yeah, two thousand, okay.
Yeah, I have no desire to keep them on campus. I'm hoping COVID cooperates.
We did say at the last meeting that it's good for a year, but if this COVID is sustained, then we could reapply for another year. That was understood last time.
Yeah, no matter what happens, you always have the right to reapply, however many times you need to. Okay, guys, why don't you come up? You said Parkers? Packers, thank you.
Good evening. I'm usually loud anyhow. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
My name is Mary Packer. We live at twenty-seven Fairview Drive. I'm going to briefly, and I speak quickly, but I want to briefly read you a letter that I sent to Dr. Matthews four weeks ago to just set this tone for what it's like to have Eastern as a neighbor. Dear Dr. Matthews, we are in receipt of your letter notifying our family the visitors are not permitted on Eastern University's campus. I am disheartened how sad that you consider the people who live around your campus visitors and not neighbors. Last March, the coronavirus sent all of us into shelter-in-place mode. Understandably, your students went home and campus life was shuttered. You put up signs, blocked your entryways. Given that you had no students on campus, it seemed a bit heavy-handed. When restrictions were lifted by Governor Wolf, your signs were still up, your entryways still blocked. It was disappointing to say the least. We are convenient for your students and school at large when you need us. We are part of that backdrop that you sell to your students and their families. A quiet residential neighborhood, easy access to public transportation, a lovely small town with restaurants and shops, a friendly, safe, and almost bucolic area that their young adults can enjoy and explore safely. Having lived across the street from Eastern for seventeen years, we have learned firsthand that close proximity to an academic institution requires some give and take. I could enumerate some of the issues that we have had to deal with, but will not, I didn't in my letter, I might tonight. Sadly, the give from Eastern seems to be missing these days. As you were midway through the fall semester with your students on campus and learning in person, it is very clear that they are not quarantined. They are allowed to avail themselves of our community and yet we, your neighbors, are forbidden on your campus. I see your track team running the streets, commuters going to the train, cars coming and going. You have other sports teams, coaches, staff, teachers, and vendors. I have run on your campus for many years and I can tell you I have never seen more than a handful of people from our community over the course of any week. Never anything close to a crowd or a gathering. Perhaps a young family, dog walker, a jogger, hardly noticeable. It would be a lovely gesture if you were to invite us to enjoy your campus again and for those walking simply ask that they wear a mask. I'm hopeful that you will give that idea thoughtful consideration. Thank you. So, to this proposal, as a neighbor who would have a bathroom trailer, I don't know, a hundred yards from our driveway, I would ask, what's already been discussed tonight, that the bathroom trailer be moved, excuse me. I've lived in Radnor long enough to know that temporary trailers somehow turn into not temporary trailers and they're there for a while. I don't think they should be granted a one-year permit. This should be a three-month permit and should be reassessed as we go forward. The world of COVID is changing daily. It's also hard for me to believe that on a campus with reduced capacity, that there is not any other building that they could find to house visiting teams during sports events. It just doesn't seem possible. They have a fitness center. It would seem to me that they could be a little bit more creative. There'll be congregations in the parking lot as these teams are trying to get into these trailers. It doesn't seem to be in the best interest of those of us that have the fortune and misfortune of living across the street from them. As for, you know, the noise that this will bring, we, my husband will testify, we listen to practices at six-thirty in the morning. They violate noise ordinances all the time. And so I guess what I would say to them is, if this is something that you really want, why aren't you working with your neighbors a little bit more collaboratively to make us all feel like we're on the same mission? Anyhow, all in hopes that maybe they'd let one old lady with her dog walk the pond late at night with a mask on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Your mask. Hi, George Packer. I also live at twenty-seven Fairview Drive. I'd like to ask Eric why we weren't informed of this before they came to the commissioners. Would that have not been fair to let us know that you went with three trailers, including a bathroom trailer approximately a hundred and fifty feet from my house? Answer?
Mr. Packer, it's public comment.
Oh, well.
Well, we're still doing a presentation. We're not at public comment yet, but we are, they don't have to respond to you. It's not an interrogation.
I think it would have been fair and correct to let your neighbors know what you were planning. To go before the board and not let us know, not very good. I mean, I've had problems before with them denying. My, yeah, I'll leave that out. I just, how would any of you feel with a bathroom trailer placed a hundred and fifty feet from your house? Am I allowed to ask that?
You can ask, but we're not going to answer.
No, no, I'm just rhetorically saying. Not too good, I think. It's my taxes that support them. I don't believe they pay you taxes. Do they?
We're really not going to answer your questions. I got to ask you to just tell us what you want to tell us.
Down to about two minutes. I just don't think it was fair the way they presented it without going to the neighbors. And I think as a taxpayer here in this township, I'm getting the short end of the stick. I have a bathroom trailer placed a hundred and fifty feet from my house. I hope you take that into consideration when you vote. And for God's sakes, if you do for some reason approve it, it should be on a three-month rolling basis. Thank you.
Guys, come on back up. I have a couple of questions for you, but I want to keep this relatively brief because we've already been doing this for like thirty minutes now. First off, there's a request that the bathroom trailer be moved. Is there any reason why you couldn't do that with the site plan you have?
Yes, that was requested and when we submit for the grading permit, it will be moved to be the trailer closest to the gym. So right now, the locker room trailers are these two and that one's the bathroom trailer. But for the grading permit, we will shift the bathroom to be closest to the interior of the property.
Okay. How far would it be from their house in this instance? I mean, you don't have a little measure, guesstimate for me. Are we saying it's going to go from a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty feet or are we saying it's going to go from a hundred and fifty to like four hundred feet away?
Well, they're forty-foot long trailers, right? So it'll be eighty feet, right, if you move?
Eighty more feet.
Eighty more feet.
So it might be two, two-fifty.
Okay. Is there any way you can move it farther than that?
Behind that arborvitae screen on Fairview as well.
Okay. What are you doing over the summer with these trailers?
Right now, it's again off to availability of the trailers. If I turn them back in, I have no problem turning them back in. It's just, are they going to be accessible for me to get them back in August when we start again?
Understood, but assuming you were to keep them.
No one will be using them.
Okay. Three months is going to be administratively impossible for us to see you guys every three months because we've already seen you like twice over the course of a rolling two-month period. Right now, you've got this for a year. What would it do to you guys if we said we want to see you every six months?
That's fine.
Okay, that kind of splits the difference a little bit. Is there any additional Commissioner questions?
Yeah, I'll just say one thing. So to the Packers' point of view, I'm the Commissioner that deals with Villanova a lot of times. So my sentiments where they're not good neighbors is often the case. I will say, in Eastern's case, I think you're doing it right. You've had, what, thirty-one COVID cases documented, unlike another institution which has had hundreds. So I think you're doing it right. I think that you are keeping everybody safe. The goal is to keep your students safe, your faculty safe, the other student athletes safe as well. So to me, that goes a long way. To their point, if you could maybe let them walk their dog, that would be, I think, a nice way to be a good neighbor. So I will be voting for this. I think six months is a terrific compromise because they really don't need to be there in the summer if we think that we're going to be moving out of COVID. But come fall, you know, you need them there for your athletes and to maintain a program, a sports program, as well as an academic program as well.
Yeah, if you don't open the campus up to residents, maybe you just quietly enroll them in like a PhD program that you guys don't really have and they just never get that PhD. They're going to be ABD for the rest of their lives.
Yeah, they can get a humane letters degree. But, yeah, but getting back to that point, I think it's good. You hear what the neighbors want. I think if you can kind of meet them halfway, we're meeting you halfway. I think we're meeting everybody halfway. That's how this thing works. It's best that it doesn't, the board doesn't decide, but you decide with the neighbors. And I think that will grant you and grant everybody the most goodwill. Thank you.
So just want to be clear again, because it seems like we've gone back and forth on this a little bit. The trailers are not required because of COVID. The trailers are required because of the facilities needed to be provided to visiting students who are competing in athletics. What exactly is the need for the trailers?
It's a hundred percent due to COVID.
Due to COVID, why?
Because we don't let, we have restrooms in our lower level of our dorms, which are no longer a common area for any of the public to go into. We have security at every door that's key swabbed. We don't let anybody go in to use those restrooms. So in order to limit any kind of infection, we don't allow visiting teams, the public, a vendor, to go into our residence hall, which is where.
In the past, you did allow people to go into the residence hall?
I'm sorry?
In the past, you did.
Yes, sir.
And now you don't.
Correct.
And that's, you're saying you're complying with the standards set by the state, CDC?
State and everybody else. Yes, sir. That's the only reason the campus has been closed down to the public, as did Cabrini. We're all in a similar boat.
Wouldn't it be easier and cheaper to get a waiver from that instead of trying to build a separate temporary facilities?
Our campus is pretty small and like one of the commissioners mentioned, usually an outbreak will start multiplying into hundreds. So we're doing everything we can to stop that from occurring.
Right, but it's inconvenient to the neighbors there and these neighbors, the Packers, have been there since two thousand and three and they pay tens of thousands of dollars in taxes along with everybody else in Fairview there. And they have a loop there that's a quiet neighborhood and this is an inconvenience. And I hear you saying, well, this is how we want to deal with the restrictions that are imposed on us, I guess, by the governor. I don't know if it's NCAA, the governor, the state, or who's proposing these, but, and this is why when you first came, I didn't know. And you came several weeks ago, a couple of months ago, I guess, maybe eight weeks ago or whatever it was, six weeks ago. And I said, let's understand who can see it from the neighbors, you know, and that was my concern. And sure enough, it is a concern. And. And sure enough, it is a concern. And if there's another way to do this, I'd prefer we do that and not have trailers there because it's just not, that's not a nice thing to put into the neighborhood. Temporary trailers on the parking lot, it's just not good for the neighbors. And they will be able to see it. Now, I was concerned about the areas around that were further, like Cornwall, Houston. But, you know, obviously, Fairview is right there, and so that's the biggest concern right now. So there's, is there any way you could do this? Just get a waiver and let people use the bathrooms that are in the residence halls, and then you don't have to put this up?
So I think getting a waiver from, from the guidelines set by the state and the CDC for the health and safety of students who also then interact within our community, who could bring COVID back into our community, which is something we certainly do not want, is a ridiculous idea.
I don't think it's ridiculous. I don't think it's ridiculous when we have people here.
Excuse me, Commissioner Booker. You've had plenty of time.
And I resent, I resent you saying...
Lisa has the floor, Commissioner Booker.
It's not ridic...
Commissioner Booker, Lisa has the floor. Commissioner Booker, Lisa has the floor.
He doesn't have the floor. I have the floor.
Thank you.
You're ridiculous.
I'm speaking. So...
You're ridiculously speaking.
Gentlemen, you know, first of all, to the neighbors, I think that, you know, I hear your concerns. It was this board, and certainly Commissioner Booker, who said to these gentlemen when they first came to us that they needed to go to the neighbors and speak to the neighbors. So I can't answer that, but I'm just saying they came to the board and the board sent them back. So that is what they, you know, they did, or at least attempted to do. I'm going to say, eh, you maybe get like a C minus on the attempt. So, you know, it doesn't sound like there's that many neighbors you needed to reach out to, sending a certified letter that doesn't get to people. I get the whole thing with the mail and all of that, but it seems a little wonky to me. You know, I think we've belabored the point of the trailers at this point. I understand, you know, why you need them. I support that. I have students in college right now, and I know that the college campuses are doing everything that they can to make sure that they keep the students safe. And then we do need to think that that is also, you know, keeping the communities that they are in safe as well. So, you know, I have, there's other things I don't understand about, like you're still putting a whole bunch of students in, you know, in one trailer, whatever. So, but I understand you're trying to, you know, work within the NCAA guidelines also and the state. So I agree with Commissioner Larkin. You know, I think three months is, you know, while I hear you on that, and I think that sounds like a good idea, it is difficult, like with our schedule, for them to try to get in here every three months. So I think six months is a good concession. I think that at the moment, you don't need them anymore, and I'm sure that you don't want the added expense. I'm assuming this is an added expense to your, you know, to the campus, to the college that you probably never anticipated, don't want, maybe can't afford, but are going to do it because you have students that are there who want to participate in the athletics, and you're trying to make that happen for them. And I appreciate that with all of the schools and all the work that all of our schools and all of our community are doing to try to make things as normal as possible right now. So I will, I'll support it. You know, I do think that in the future, you know, schools and the neighbors, you know, we've heard this before, certainly Commissioner Farhi brings it up all the time, you know, everyone, you know, trying to work together. We all share the same community, the same neighborhoods. You know, again, would it hurt to let the people come and walk through the campus? It's a beautiful campus. It is, you know, a shared community. I don't think anyone's going to try to go into the dorms. So I think that might be a nice, a nice way to, you know, work with the neighbors and the community if they're giving a little bit, if you guys could give a little bit as well. So that if you, that's something that can be considered. So I will support this. And, you know, I do support the health and safety of the students who will be coming into our community, and we really don't want them bringing COVID into our community any more than it's already here.
So I have two amendments that I'd like to offer before we continue discussing this. The first is, or I'll just run them all together into one, the one, two, three, fourth whereas clause, I propose amending. It would now read, whereas the trailer installation is temporary, and said trailers shall only be allowed on site through June 1, 2020, following which time Eastern University may apply for an extension for additional periods. I would add a fifth whereas clause, which would read, whereas Eastern shall, in its grading permit and final construction, relocate the bathroom trailer to the farthest point possible from the Packer residence, not to be less than an additional 80 feet over what is currently depicted in its plans, and to be screened by Arborvitae or similar evergreens. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion for amendment passes unanimously. Is there any final commissioner comment on the amended proposed resolution?
Where are they going to put the Arborvitae's? On pavement? You're going to put them in, you got a planter. So that's what that says. You got to put planters to block it.
They told us that there was going to be a screen of trees.
That screen is existing.
Yeah, I'm not saying you have to put in new evergreens. I'm just saying it's got to be blocked by a screen of evergreens because if you say it, I'm locking you in.
That existing satisfies your...
Yes. As I understand what I just said and wrote, that would satisfy it.
But if it doesn't block, then you need to put them in.
Commissioner Larkin, I just, just one question, not to them, actually to the Packers. I know this isn't everything that you want. Is this a fair compromise to the best of your ability? I'm sure you want more. Just what are your thoughts on this? Because you're here and you're, you know, and this is what it's about, the community as well as the institutions.
So Sean, we're going to have public comment in a minute, and they can come on back up. I don't want to do like 30 different back and forths because they're going to want a rebuttal.
Okay.
There's going to be public comment.
It's out of order when, you can speak, speak to that during public comment. But I, Lisa, want to know that you're, you know, what you, you're thinking. It matters because it's a delicate balance, as Commissioner Browski brought up. Thank you.
Okay, super fast because this is...
Yeah, I just noticed in the resolution that it references three temporary locker rooms. I assume that's three temporary locker room trailers, although two locker room trailers and one bathroom trailer. I don't know how precise that should be in the first whereas.
Yeah, that should be three temporary trailers.
Trailers. And then the last line, it actually says two temporary locker rooms. So it definitely is three. What do we?
We'll clean all that up in accordance with the amended resolutions. We'll make sure all that's taken care of.
We understand what you're looking for here. Thank you for the correction. That's a good catch. Public comment. We have now five minutes. If there is anything that anybody, including you guys, the Packers, want to come up and say, please feel free to do so. You won't get questions from the board afterwards.
I just wanted to say, I really appreciate you asking us if this was sufficient. Of course, not entirely, but it's the real world. And while I'm still ever so slightly skeptical that they really need these trailers and that the campus couldn't find some accommodation, if they're insisting that that's the case, at least they're moving the bathroom trailer. And if they're willing to work with the people who live directly across the street with them, I think that's at least an awareness that they really aren't just in their own little world with their own little students, all headed off to all their little places. So I appreciate your asking. And if it's the best we can do, it's the best we can do. Exactly. Thank you. Thank you very much to everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you. George Packer, 27 Fairview. Just wanted to know if my PhD is put here dummy. But anyway, just one remark. If money were no issue, which, Eric, I do realize, small school, the tennis courts were the obvious place to put them. I didn't bring that up. First of all, nobody would see them that lives outside the campus, nor probably would anybody smell them. So just, but I do realize getting three trailers onto those courts would cost money. I just would like you guys to keep in mind, when somebody wants to put a bathroom trailer 150 feet from your house, just, you know, keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Okay, moving on to our third...
Please go.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. We've been doing this for way too long. All in favor of the amended item 3B, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes six to one. See, this is why I did the motion up at the front. I was going to be so zonked by the end, we wouldn't have a motion. Item 3C, resolution number 2020-124, 208 North Aberdeen Avenue Land Development, six townhouses, caucus preliminary final approval.
Sir, Commissioner, the applicant from Rockwell Developments here for six townhouses. The board has the zoning amendment to allow townhouses in certain areas of the C3 zoning district was adopted. Planning Commission recommended approval of the plan. The applicant is requesting a waiver to proceed with their plan as preliminary final. And as you noted, this is caucus, so there's no action taken tonight.
Steve, just to confirm, planning has now seen both the land development plan that's in front of us and separately the zoning issue that we dealt with previously, correct?
That is correct.
Perfect. Okay, Nick, take it away.
Sure. Evening, Nick Canilia. I believe you've seen this plan previously. The board at the last meeting approved the amendment to the C3 zoning district. This is the plan, basically six townhomes. Here is Aberdeen Avenue. The six townhomes, obviously, they will be, this is just in block view, they will be adjusted to show indentations and things of that nature, showing delineation between the townhomes. Just basically, the review, we are requesting two waivers. One waiver is for preliminary final land development approval. The second waiver is the one regarding 500 feet within the site delineation of man-made features. Photograph has been applied and included in this packet, showing the man-made features within 500 feet. I believe that revised plans have been submitted to Roger. I don't know if Roger's had an opportunity. He's shaking his head, no. So he hasn't had, has not had an opportunity to review those plans yet. And they're basically, took care of all the comments in the review. We complied with all the comments in the review letter, except for the two waivers that we are requesting. In number three of subdivision and land development, Roger mentioned that elevations and sketches of proposed buildings are encouraged. We do not have these at this time, but we are talking about high-end townhomes here, and we should have those prior to recording of the plan. The only other comment that I think needs to be addressed is number seven. It was asking for additional street trees, and this was also mentioned to Planning Commission. And in lieu of providing those additional street trees, we'll make a payment in lieu. I believe we discussed that with Norsini during the Planning Commission, and I believe everyone was in agreement with that. And the only other comments that need to be addressed, and that they were complied with, was Damon's review letter from Gilmore and Associates. And again, the plan indicates that Damon requested a five-foot sidewalk. Originally, a four-foot sidewalk was proposed, and the plan does comply and did install a five-foot sidewalk, eliminating the one-foot vegetated area that Damon suggested. And also, Damon suggested that the driveway be widened, even though it does comply, and it's a typical minimal width for allowing two-way drives. We were able to add an additional foot to that so that we have a 17-foot driveway rather than the 16-foot driveway that were originally on the plans. Certainly, we're willing to answer any other questions, but again, I believe the board has seen this plan numerous times in the past.
Actually, I have a question for John Rice, specific to the preliminary final waiver that you're asking for. John, if we were to grant preliminary approval of the land development plan, and the applicant was to return with a substantially identical plan for final approval, would we be then permitted to deny the final land development approval in spite of the fact that there was no substantive change between the preliminary and the final?
No.
So if they show up with the same plan twice, we're required to grant it the second time if we granted the first?
Yeah, the important decision that you make is on the preliminary plan, because then the applicant's entitled to approval on the final plan in accordance with the terms of the preliminary plan. So preliminary plans, I mean, it's broken up when you have a lot of outside permits. You have DEP, maybe you have appendage issue, maybe you have, you know, and then they're attached at the preliminary plan stage, but they can be attached at a preliminary final stage, too.
Is there any reason, and this is, I guess, a combination for Steve Norsini and for you, John, is there any reason why if we grant preliminary final, not today, obviously, because we're just caucusing, but we couldn't do that with the conditions that still have not been met?
I mean, I don't have any issue with it. You're going to have, if the board's okay with that, the resolution that'll come back at your next meeting will have a grant of that. It'll be a preliminary final. But you still have all those conditions.
Right.
Including whenever outside permits have to be received. You still, there's still some stormwater issues. Is there an NPDES permit?
I don't think we need the NPDES. Is that, has that been confirmed? Patrick?
Okay, so it's, and this plan has been bouncing around the township since January, February, more or less. So it's not a, it's a pretty straightforward plan, I think.
Great. We just heard stormwater. You guys have told us several times you're not going to need a waiver for infiltration. Is there any stormwater waivers you're asking for?
No.
Excellent. Could you say that into the microphone so the crowd at home can hear you?
No stormwater waivers.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, those are the questions that I have. Is there any additional commissioner comment?
So I, I have a couple. Go ahead. No, go ahead, Damian. You want to go? Go ahead. I just have two quick, two quick questions. Thank you for detailing the waivers that you're looking for. So about the parking, so it was noted on here. Where's the, so the visitor and the overflow parking? You know, where will that be accommodated? And also, my other question is around the cart path and the widths, the cartway widths. So those two.
So we're going to provide on-street parking, five spaces on Aberdeen, and then with overflow and visitor parking, there'll be spaces available in the driveways. So these driveways are 20 feet long.
Okay. So how, how do you provide the on-street parking? Could you let me know exactly how do you do that? I mean, if there's already on-street parking, how do you provide it?
Well, right now, this is pretty, pretty much a wide-open driveway.
Okay.
So what we're doing is pushing the, if there was a curb line, it would be here. So what we're doing is taking, putting in a curb eight feet back.
So you're providing parking on streets?
On-street parking for the neighborhood, yes.
Okay. That no one else would be able to utilize, or other neighbors?
It would be open.
Remember, this is additional parking to what is required under the code, yeah. And remember, from the very beginning, there was a request to put in on-street parking. And that's where this request came from, and that's why this has been provided.
Okay. So talk to me about the cart, the cartways and the widths, so that, you know, we can make sure that the fire engines and, I don't know if that was going to be your question, Damian?
No.
But...
I'm just around environmental issues, but go ahead.
Okay.
So the cartway width is going to be maintained, the existing cartway width will be maintained on Aberdeen. The fire access would be from the front, from what we understand.
Can you show me the fire accesses and how it works?
So fire access would come from the front, from, right.
When you say come from the front, there's a, so it's a driveway, it's coming in those, that driveway in the front?
There is a driveway going back to access the garages back here. There can be fire access back here, but...
I'm going to let you take it, Fire Guy.
Yeah, and you, thank you. And you said you widened that driveway by one foot. So what's the width of the driveway? You said 16, 17 feet?
Well, it's seven, it's 17 feet, 17 feet, 1 inch.
Okay. So I'm no expert in this. There's others in the room that have more experience, like our superintendent of police. But can a fire engine, an average fire engine, make that corner on the back side? Or is a fire engine going to come around there and be stuck trying to make that corner for access on the back?
Down in here?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I, they would not pull a fire truck down there. Yeah, no, I, they would not pull a fire truck down there.
No, wouldn't be able to get down there?
Yeah, they wouldn't, they wouldn't want to. I mean, the distance we're talking about here is, you know, 75, 80 feet.
Right.
To the back.
Well, there could be an opportunity, I mean, if there was, if there was a fire on the seaside back there, they maybe need to get a fire truck back there.
I don't, I don't think they would wanna put a fire truck back here, just because, you know, they're gonna wanna stay away from the buildings.
Okay.
So my understanding is.
It's gonna be too close in proximity, I understand.
Yeah, my understanding is that they would not pull back here.
All right, understood, thank you. Did you have more questions, Commissioner Borowski? So my, while we're on the topic of that, on that site and the existing building that's there, that the pool service was using for storage, when we had a fire there three years ago, two and a half years ago, the amount of chemicals that were found by the fire inspector in the back of that property, and in the tanks, was unbelievable. What has been done to clean that up, remediate it, ensure that everything's been removed from that property?
Christie, has been remediated, I'll let you address it.
Thank you, I'm Christie Flynn with Rockwell. Prior to us closing on the property, we were under contract, and that fire occurred in the house. Before the township was comfortable with us taking title to the property, they required cleanup of that material. All of the chemicals were properly removed, we provided waste receipts for all of those, they brought in a submarine to take away an unmarked tank, because there was a substantial amount of chemicals there. So that has all been remediated, it's been remediated for two years at this point, since that time.
It's been cleaned up to the satisfaction of the township and the state.
We were required to clean it up and provide that information before we even closed.
Okay, thank you.
Could you turn to the demolition plan? Walk me through that. So, if you could go through.
Right now, so there is a, the house.
You're talking into the mic, please.
So the house is sitting here on the north side of the property. This is all open asphalt pavement. There's really not much to the demolition plan, so I'm not sure how much you want me to walk through it. It's remove the house, take out the asphalt, upgrade the property. As far as the remediation activity exactly here, I may have to defer to Christie for those specifics on these tanks.
Which house? So what's, what's on the other side, what's north, what's that, what's that, right?
Right there, that's the, that's where the pool service had a storefront.
Uh-huh.
I'm not, it's being renovated right now. Again, I don't know the, what the tenant's going to be.
So what's happening with that site? It's gray up there.
210 North Aberdeen is this site right here, this is what you're talking about?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so this building is being renovated for another use. It's not part of this project.
It's not connected with this at all. So the house next to it is the one that's being demolished right there. The tree, there's, how many trees are coming out? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 16 trees?
We've been, we've been through shade tree. These are all nuisance, dying trees, overgrown. They were quite happy with the landscape plan.
And what's the capacity, then, for the new stormwater infiltration system? I saw you, you had that on there, so it seems like it's, it's set up to.
I don't remember the exact numbers, but we're capturing pretty much the 100-year storm. Not pretty much, we are capturing the 100-year storm with this basin. So it's a zero-discharge basin. I just don't know the cubic feet off the top of my head.
So Commissioner, it does comply, other than the cleanup articles, it does comply with our stormwater management ordinance, and just as a note, there is no stormwater management currently on the site.
What's the existing width of Aberdeen Ave in front of these houses?
The existing cart width?
Yes.
Cart width is. Right away with. I do not have a scale on me. I don't remember, I do not have a scale on me, I don't remember off the top of my head, and I. Here's my curb line on the east. So the existing cartway is about 20. 27 feet.
It's very tight through there, isn't it? Let a lot of cars go back and forth. So is there enough width there, and then also having new parking, where your fingers are?
Right, so the parking.
The parking is parallel parking, too, right?
It's parallel parking, it is be, it is, it starts at the existing curb, what would be the existing curb, and pushes back, so it doesn't take any of the cartway away.
Other than, why not have a preliminary and a final? Why not take some, you know, notwithstanding that we've had a lot of people in the township look at these plans, why not have a preliminary approval and then a final approval, and make sure that we go through everything and that everyone's comfortable and the community gets two opportunities to see it? So I don't, I don't see the need for combining them into one.
Everything on the preliminary plan, everything that would be on the final plan is included in the preliminary plan. And as you heard, and as you know, that once a preliminary plan is approved, the final plan has to be approved, provided that it's with the same plan as a preliminary. In this case, we're asking for the preliminary final plan to be approved, which locks it in to the approval of this particular plan. So nothing's gonna be changed, but that could be changed between a preliminary and final, since everything's locked into this one plan.
Nick, I understand, I understand. I still think it's better to have two, that's, that's what the procedure is, preliminary and a final, and if there was ever to be any changes or any modifications or any corrections, we could, you have that opportunity, and it's really not a hardship.
Nick, on this plan, the common driveway, it accesses six, six dwellings, correct?
Correct.
So do you not need a waiver? My understanding was, SALDO allows access to three dwellings.
I think it cuts the driveway. I believe that it cuts roadway, a private road. It would be considered that? Oh, if it was a private road, I believe, Jake, that the SALDO requires three, a driveway, I believe, and I don't think there's a limitation on the driveway.
So there's a distinction between?
This is not a private road. And they each have, as Christie just mentioned, they each have frontage on Aberdeen Avenue as well.
Excuse me, Nick, just to clarify that.
Go ahead.
A private driveway can only access three lots. The configuration of this property is actually, from what I understand, is one lot. They're not separate individual lots.
And then that driveway is, I mean, that serves as in and out to the garages, so instead of 17 feet, doesn't it need to be 25 feet?
I don't, no, there is no requirement in the code in that regard.
This issue with Lancaster Avenue, 724, going to their driveway, going to their parking lot, we said 25 feet.
That's not the requirement. If you look at the SALDO, there is no requirement for that.
What was where Rock Walker's old building was, what's that, at 724, is that one of yours? What was it?
No, that wasn't, I mean.
What's the address? You know the one I'm talking about?
That is.
The condos are, condos, it's similar, right? The, we said 25 feet we needed.
I'm not familiar with that being a requirement or this code. We looked at the code, and we looked at the code, and there was no requirement for a 25-foot driveway.
I recall that, that was the issue on why that plan was denied.
The SALDO doesn't require a 20-foot driveway for this development. I believe this is under multiple, multiple family, and it does not have a requirement for the driveway width.
So we're not really gonna get anywhere with us asking you the same question over and over again, and you just saying the same thing, it's not in the SALDO. Why don't we say that in between now and when you guys come back, you will double-check the SALDO, and Steve, you will double-check as well, and you will make sure that Nick stays honest with us.
Right.
So Commissioner, they've submitted revised plans addressing the review comments. We'll go through them, and we'll make sure that those plans are reviewed and those comments have been addressed prior to them coming back to the board.
I'm not saying it's not 25, I'm just saying that the process of us asking you, isn't it 25, and you saying, no, it's not, over and over again, isn't gonna happen?
I remember looking at the SALDO when, in the beginning, and I can't really quote the section right now, but next time, we will.
Okay, great. Do we have any additional commissioner comments on this? We're not voting today, and you guys will come back and ask questions or answer questions at a later date.
Yes.
Can I, just one question, this plan, is this plan available online, Steve or Roger, right now?
Yes, it is.
This revised plan?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is? It's a, okay.
This, this plan that's in front of you right here, yes.
Okay, this exact plan.
Commissioner, for any of your constituents, on the left-hand side, there's a tab for current land development projects, so everything, all this and the other, as well as the Hamilton Estate, all those are on there.
This plan that addresses the comments from the November 2nd letter?
So this plan does not, the revised plans do. They will be posted once they're reviewed also.
Okay, great, all right. When do you anticipate those being posted, Steve?
As soon as possible.
Great, thank you.
Steve, do you remember the 25-foot issue with?
I do, Commissioner, I don't, I don't recall if that was a matter of code, or it was safety, because there's 20 units there, as opposed to six. It's, it was a different situation, so I, I don't, and we're gonna dig into that after this meeting, and we'll have all that information back, but I don't recall that being a requirement for the townhouses.
And matter of fact, I'll quote, is section 255-40E deals with driveways for multifamily and attached dwelling residential development. And if you notice, in E, there is no driveway width mentioned, except under E2, it stays driveway shall be planned for convenient circulation, suitable for traffic needs and safety. And that was Damon's comment, that the driveway is standard, the 16-foot driveway, although he did request a wider drive, and that's where we came up with the 17-foot, one-inch wider driveway.
Guys, not hearing any additional commissioner comments, thank you very much for your time. We will see you, I guess, at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 3D, resolution number 2020-125, award of contract number B-20-009, Morris Road Streetscape Improvements to Premier Concrete Incorporated in the amount of $509,039.25, paid from 2019 bond financing. I will so move, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is this you, Steve?
Yes, sir.
I saw a bond, and I immediately looked over to the left, but I guess that's still you.
So this project has been in design, and there's been multiple resident meetings, town hall meetings on this. It's been through Shade Tree, it's been before this board, so we did put the project out to bid, and I'm happy to say the project came in at $509,039.25. In the GOB, there was $825,000 budgeted for this project, and based on what we spent on design, this construction, as well as proposed inspections, and a 15% contingency, there would still be a balance of approximately $100,000 available, if all goes according to plan. This was done in coordination with the residents on Morris Road. I think this meets their needs. It has granite curb, it has the trees they requested, and so we are requesting that the Board of Commissioners award this. The contractor has been vetted, they've actually done work in this township before, but we did call their references, so we're requesting a word of this contract this evening.
All right, well, it looks like the president has left. So we have a motion and a second, is there any commissioner comment? All right, any staff comment? Public comment?
Hi, I'm Sarah Pugh, I live at 362 Morris Road. So is it possible for us just to get an update in terms of sort of, I know that we've talked about this multiple times, in terms of the timeline, things like that, and I thought that actually in the construction, or the road actually got finished earlier than we had thought, so I think that the residents were happy about that. However, again, like, we keep asking for timelines, timelines, things like that, but thank you, actually, Jake, for inviting me to this meeting, because I thought it was important just to have the street represented, because we have a lot of time and energy and money has been spent on this project, so that's why I think that constant updates would be very helpful for the streets.
So if I can address that, so in, in the future, if you ever have a question about a project timeline, please just call or email me directly, but the township manager has directed us, we're gonna have an online forum for the residents of Morris Road. And that, that link will go to the commissioner, he can distribute that. That online forum that the manager directed us to do is gonna have your contact information. That will be the basis for our project updates. So once it's awarded, if it is awarded tonight, there's still a several-week lag time between, the contractor can officially start, during that period is when we get their schedule. We will share that schedule with you, we will share weekly or bi-weekly updates as to where the project is. Everything is weather-dependent.
Yeah, we've been told that before.
So if we have a good winter, this project would get completed early. If we have a typical, not-so-nice Pennsylvania winter, it would be, you know, end of the, it would be end of the second quarter of this year. But the manager had a great idea in doing that, and that'll be our method of communication moving forward.
No, I think that's a good idea, because that has been my only, like, well, not my only, but that has been a big, a big request of the residences in terms of, all right, keeping us informed. So I do appreciate it, I do think that you guys are doing a nice job with the project, just that, yeah, we would like, especially given that it affects us as homeowners, so thank you. That's all I have.
And Steve, could, I think there's some residents probably watching this at home are gonna watch the tape, can you just walk through the improvements to the island area? I think that's one of the big takeaways from this project.
That's a great question, Commissioner, so basically from South Devon down Morris Road, there's the installation of granite curb, concrete driveway aprons, and new concrete sidewalk. And as we get up to the intersection where the island is, understanding the large amount of pedestrians that are on the street, the families, everybody that walks there, that island will have ADA ramps to take you across the street, either to the apartments or to go towards the park. So, and that'll be landscaped appropriately, I believe you had requested we're gonna stay with one of those trees in the middle of that, and it'll be landscaped otherwise, but that is a big feature for getting folks safely over to our park or across the street the other way.
And those crosswalks will be, so there'll be three marked crosswalks?
Yes, with the, what we call, they're continental crosswalks, we call them piano keys.
Hi, Ryan Rose, resident of 364 Morris. One of the things discussed early on was a bike lane, potentially, did that make it all the way through?
That did not, so it's, we. Uh, so it's, we, we kept it as the project that it is. That entails some more different studies and whether the bike lane is between the cars and the curb or out on the other side. So we, we kept the project, uh, based on our meetings, just moving forward with trying to get the street improvement project. That is something based on the existing street with, that can be evaluated anytime. I didn't, we didn't want to mire, mire down the project with that.
Okay, thanks.
Is there any additional public comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 3E, resolution number 2020 dash 126, award of contract number B dash 20 dash 011, Fall Tree Planting Program to All Seasons Landscaping Incorporated in the amount of $88,430.74 paid from the Township's general fund. I will so move, is there a second?
Second.
So Commissioner, uh, let's just say now, this, this tree project is funded by the Shade Tree Fund solely. And, uh, I want to say I have to thank the Shade Tree Commission. This is the largest planting project to date. It's 174 trees, uh, a good portion in the WBOD, uh, 76 trees for the residents that usually sign up for our fall tree planting program. So this is massive, uh, and the Shade Tree Commission did a huge amount of work on this. And I have to do, uh, also give credit to Eileen Brett, who did a heck of a lot of work in working with the WBOD, the WBA in the WBOD, along with other members. So this is, uh, like I say, by far the largest tree planting project that I, I can remember in township history. And it is fully funded by the Shade Tree Fund. And, uh, if you need any further information, I did put the bid tab in there. As you can see, the lowest qualified bidder is at $88,430.74, All Seasons Landscaping Company. They have been vetted, they have done considerable amount of work in the township in the past, but we do still check references and, uh, they have been approved in that respect.
Is there any commissioner comment?
So Mr. Norris, Mr. Norrisini, I'll show my ignorance on this one. It comes out to $500 a tree. Cost plus, you know, labor, mulch, water. Why so much? Why $500 a tree?
So I think one of the things you have to remember in any township project, especially of this magnitude, there's prevailing wages. So, uh, if you were to call up X Tree Company to plant a tree in your yard, conceivably you could get it at less expense. But they are paying prevailing wages which are, uh, higher than what a normal non-union landscaper would pay. Also, there's, uh, the bid bond, performance bond, payment bond and maintenance bond. So all these bond costs get spread through the cost of the trees too. Uh, and in weighing some of these trees, so where we have the trees for the residents, it's a little easier to plant because they can pull up on the street and, you know, they'll plant it in a right-of-way. In the WBOD, that, that's a little more tenuous because there's some traffic and concrete to deal with. So honestly, Commissioner, for, even though there is a lot of trees, so there's some economy of scale, I don't, it's not a bad price. Uh, as the bidding climate shows us, uh, that's the lowest bid. Right? And that can change with any bid at any time.
So when my father told me in high school to find a trade, I probably should have done that instead of where I am now.
If you see our building contract bids and you might have want to become a plumber, electrician or other type person too, because they're all, uh, they all do well.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I'm going to call Harry Hoplamazian after this.
I think, um, also just to note that the, um, the trees that, the township will be, will take care of the trees that are in the WBOD, correct, Steve? And the trees at Odericio and
Correct.
Will be responsible for the watering, but the rest of the, the other ones, the residents have also contributed towards, so.
A lot of the WBOD trees would be just a continuation of the 66 we planted, uh, with the other project the board approved. And they're doing well, I might say. Uh, some, uh, a little further off will be taken care of by those entities and the residents are required to, uh, we, we fill the water bag the first time, then they're required to take care of it.
And they did also contribute. So this is the program where they paid $35 for a tree.
Yes, ma'am.
I think this is fabulous.
And again, this is all coming out of Shade Tree.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And the money, the $20,000 we approved on the consent agenda from Shanticleer goes towards this as well, correct?
That's correct. Actually, there's enough in the fund right now to, to fund it, uh, but the $20,000 definitely helps if there should be a change order or any issues we encounter.
Thank you. And Shade Tree really has, they've done an amazing job with this. They
Yeah, and that's
Put their heart and souls in there.
To remember, they've all done a lot of work on this.
Is there any additional commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment?
Just, just one more, just one more quick clarification, not to belabor the point, but to, to the point about the money in the Shade Tree Fund, the $20,000 that was approved tonight going towards this project, if any of it's not used for this, it remains in the Shade Tree Fund and can be used in future years for future tran, plea, uh, tree planting projects. So, uh, even if it's not used now, it'll be there in future years.
Um, Bill, sorry to interrupt, could it be used for tree planting, but could it be also used for tree removal? So if we have dead trees or invasive trees?
No, the, the money in the Shade Tree Fund is used exclusively for planting trees. Any tree removal that the township does, uh, is paid for out of the general fund. And we established that years ago to make sure that there was no confusion between donated money for tree plantings ever being used for tree removal. It's only used for tree planting.
I'll caveat, caveat my, my question with, how about tree replacement? Could they dig up a tree that's in the right-of-way that's on its last, last few years and then replace it?
So Commissioner, in, in past projects for the fall planting, the residents that were contacted were the residents who, through the contract you just, uh, awarded last meeting, where they had trees cut down, uh, they were contacted to see if they wanted to participate. So I, I think in that respect that goes hand in hand, but there's no specific program that says if a tree was removed, there's a specific replacement. That's why we have the fall tree planting program and that's why we have the tree and stump removal program, uh, contract that you awarded.
Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor of resolution number 2020 dash 126 say aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Resolution passes unanimously. Item 3F, ordinance number 2020 dash 20, introduction, enacting a new chapter 176, motor vehicle bridge crash reimbursement, authorizing the collection of and the reimbursement of township and fire department costs of response and cleanup after transportation, authorizing fines and penalties. Uh, I'm assuming, John, this is you.
I'll take this. As the board knows, the, the issue of bridges in the township, uh, being hit by vehicles, usually vehicles that shouldn't be going underneath the bridges, um, has been a topic for a long time at, at the public meetings. After the last discussion, I believe a couple of meetings ago, um, the chief and I and other members of the police department got together and, uh, went back and looked at an ordinance that we had done a year or so ago that was pretty extensive. We put this together with the idea, uh, that we would cover, uh, all bridges, not just the bridge, the usual bridge that gets hit on King of Prussia Road, but cover any instance where any of the bridges, whether it's a rail crossing or pedestrian trail crossing, uh, in the township and provide for some kind of mechanism that would recoup some costs, uh, over and above the ordinary costs that the township would incur, uh, and some fire companies might incur. And also fine, uh, the, um, people or company that, uh, would be hitting the bridge. So it's up for some discussion. I think the board's direction the last time was if the staff can put something together that will address this situation, then the board would, uh, take a serious look at it. We think this does this. I don't know if the chief or, um, I think, um, Mark Stancen also worked on this extensively with me. Want to add anything to this? Uh, it covers crashes, uh, of motor vehicles into township bridges. So it's up for introduction tonight and, uh, we're here to answer any questions.
So first off, I will so move, is there a second? John, I see that this is listed as fines and penalties. I'm wondering, is there any mechanism that you can think of to amend this where it would be something the nature of a civil assessment? I'm looking to find a way that your insurance will pay it and I doubt that they would pay your fines.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess we could call it something else, but, you know.
They're still just not going to pay it?
It, it, it's a fine that may or may not, their insurance, I mean, insurance.
Well, the insurance should pay for the cost to the township. That's the, that's the cost, the fine is in addition to the cost.
Right. The reimbursement cost should be covered by insurance, the fines, um, $1,500 fine for the first offense, it is violation of an ordinance, I mean, the way it's written, so.
And if a company pays that $1,500 or $2,500 for continuing, that's not tax deductible. So, I mean, it's a penalty, that's what it is.
Right.
Uh, so I don't like how that's worded. A business doesn't hit a bridge, a person does. Um, if I rent, if I, if I rent a truck from U-Haul, is that, the U-Haul is going to pay? Is that, um, me as an individual, is that going to pay or?
It's going to be the driver.
Pardon?
It's going to be the driver.
It's going to be the driver. So I think that needs to be amended to the driver that pays, not the business, not the entity, uh, not the entity, the person.
But if a FedEx truck hits the bridge, then we would want to be able to assess FedEx instead of some hapless driver with no ability to pay us, particularly if he doesn't have insurance.
No, but I mean, if
It says business or person, Sean.
No, let me, let me, you know, if that FedEx driver is doing something just as dangerous, like speeding through a neighborhood, I don't want to, you can go after FedEx and you can also go after the driver, the police are going to write that guy a ticket.
Well, FedEx is going to have coverage for their driver.
FedEx is going to have coverage. I, 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 I don't know why we need to try to make this, um, more, uh, you know, easier on these, these businesses.
It's a business or person.
It should be a person. A person hits the bridge, not a business. Okay, but Sean, the guys that drive two men on a truck? Yep. That, that hit those? Yep. You're never going to get any money out of them. You're not, you're not going to get it, you're not going to get it from them anyway. But that at least gives the police a reason to, if they get pulled over again, because we all know what happened with them, to pull their license, to take their license.
But their, but their business is going to be liable for them. So the business would be responsible, but I don't disagree.
No, the person is responsible.
Could it be business?
Not legally, though, the business is, is going to be liable for the actions of their employee in all sorts of ways.
This is like a fine, like a speeding ticket.
And when you, when you want to assess, um, a penalty, you assess it against the business who is responsible for hiring their employees. I think it's, I think it's crafted correctly.
Could it be business or, uh, just take out entity and say responsible party?
Well, let me, let me ask, you know, hold on, let me ask the chief.
I'm not a lawyer.
Okay, let me ask the chief a question.
We spent a lot of time on this, so you can all want to, you want to over-lawyer it, go for it. But I would suggest that the way this is written is, matches these types of ordinances. We didn't do this frivolously. It's a business or a person. If it's a person that's working for FedEx, driving a truck, it's going to flow back to FedEx. That driver's their agent. You might have an individual person that, that, that rents a box truck. That person, like you, that person is going to be liable.
Yeah.
Because there's no company involved.
And I should be.
So don't overthink it.
So, okay, let me ask, I guess we have three, three police, no, we have three policemen in the room, three patrolmen, highway patrolmen in the room. So if, let's say someone hits the truck, a FedEx driver hits the truck, you're going to, I mean, how do you assess him with this? Are you going to assess him with also reckless driving or some other fine as, as well, um, on top of this? Is this given afterwards? Is this a separate ticket? Do you, uh, explain to me how you go about at least saying we want $1,500?
Commissioner Farhi, I want to answer in a two-part question. As Mr. Rice laid out, we, we definitely put this ordinance together and I, I have to acknowledge Commissioner Booker's passion for making the bridge strikes, uh, hopefully reduce as we continue on and redo that because it's, it's been a long road. I'm going to introduce Officer Janoski, who is a motor carrier safety inspector, a truck specialist for the township. He'll explain the first part and then Mr. Rice can, can tell you about how we would collect that.
So the way it works is there's, there's two violations that are going to be committed. To answer your question, Commissioner Farhi, there is a motor vehicle violation enacted by the driver who strikes the bridge. That driver will receive a traffic citation for the motor vehicle violation under the Pennsylvania Vehicle Code, for his infraction, for his driving error. As far as the truck operating in commercial status, striking the bridge, that liability falls on the company, which is why we issue the citation to the company under our township ordinance. Every commercial truck is registered with a DOT number, they're federally regulated. So that company has to have what's called operating authority. It protects their load, it protects and ensures any mishaps that they may have. And they have to have that operating authority to be in commercial status. So the company is ultimately reliable for any actions or inactions that that truck's taken, no matter who's driving it or what action's taken. The driver is just an agent of that company, but the company takes liability for whatever that agent does and his actions of performing his duties in commercial status for that company.
I, I just have a quick question around the, um, the 30 days, the failure to make payment within 30 days. So what's the penalty in that case if they don't pay?
Well, I think
Uh, item E, I guess.
Right. Well, there's two, D and A sort of go together. It's really going to be the township's, the township manager's role to, or someone at his direction to put together this cost, reimbursable cost. When that gets sent, it's a 30-day time period. If it's not paid within 30 days, they'll probably get first notice. If it's not paid in another 15, maybe a second notice. If it's not paid at all, we're going to file a, a citation in district justice court. And we will tell them in one of those notices or in the letter that Bill sends that if it's not paid within 30 days, there's this additional possible penalty, because that would be a violation of the ordinance. So that would go to district justice court. But it's going to be a collection issue, Lisa. You know, it depends on who it is and, you know, whether they want to pay it promptly or whether they want to fight about it. So, um, you know, we'll see how it goes. But I think it's, you know, it's set up so the costs that we're going to claim, it's going to all flow through the township and then come to the township.
Then we'll be responsible for reimbursing, say, the fire company or?
Right, if there's, if there's, you know, legitimate costs that flow from whatever the response is, then we're going to have to get those costs from the fire EMS, you know, and then that'll be itemized and that'll be sent, um, you know, as a reimbursable cost.
With that being said, do we double the fines? Um, instead of 1,500, make it 3,000 and the second strike 5,000? I mean, I mean, this isn't, these aren't, this isn't cheap when this happens. Uh, and then we have all of our police, all of our EMS wind up having to go to one, you know, one location. It happened once there were two bridge strikes at the same time. This isn't like a $1,500 fine, these are major, major, and you don't know what, well, you don't know what the, um, what the aftermath is going to be because you do a lot of structural damage to these things and then you wind up having to have an engineer look at a, look at an overpass or a bridge and if it's not safe, get shut down.
Yeah, I don't know whether we'd be responsible.
Isn't enough.
I don't know whether the township would be responsible for any structural damage, but, yeah, we don't own the bridges. We, but the fines and penalties, if we're recouping all those other costs, Sean, you know, we, we can't pile on with fines and penalties that aren't related to anything, other than to penalize somebody more.
Okay, well, I mean, then
So what I would, what I would suggest is let's see how this works. You can always come back and amend this.
Well, I, I would like to make an amendment right now to double the fines.
Let me, let me just finish. Ordinances, typically what your fines are and all, all your other Ordinances, typically what your fines are in all your other ordinances is $1,000. So we're a little bit above your other fines and penalties provisions in your other ordinances. And usually it says up to $1,000, because we rarely see in District Justice Court a $1,000 fine for something that we go there for. This is just a flat fine. It's substantial compared to what you have involving other ordinances.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to double that, to change that from $1,500 to $3,000 and from $2,500 to $5,000.
Your motion, is there a second?
Nope.
Okay. Motion fails for lack of a second.
I appreciate Commissioner Farhey's sentiment. I think the $1,500 makes the point, plus there's already costs, which could be another several thousand. So this will get all the trucking company's attention, and I think that it's the right number. I wouldn't mind $3,000, but we, you know, again, this is, I think this is the right number.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I will call, oh, sorry.
Sarah Pillings, 29 Garrett Avenue. I can't identify the year, but Dave Bayshore was still the manager. The last time that the township tried to pass an ordinance to assess damages if someone struck the bridge. Does this have any resemblance to that? Because it got laughed. The back of this room was nothing but TV cameras the time it came up for movement, and the township just, it quietly went away. I just want to.
My understanding of that was that the township, and this is before my time, but I went back and did look at some old documents and some newspaper reports. The township was trying to collect the cost of its police services, period. Not the striking of a bridge, just the cost of police services, and I don't know, Chief may have been around, but that then was litigated, and I think Rendell might have been the governor or the mayor at the time, because, anyway, that, it was that. It was recouping your normal police services in response to accidents and other incidents. So this has to do with hitting property and finding people for hitting property.
But it did involve bridges, because the first accident.
It could have, right.
Was on Shimonie, and as I remember it, it's been a lot of years ago, they wouldn't charge township residents, but they would charge non-t township residents who struck a bridge or something that caused damage.
Another problem with an ordinance.
And the first guy was an attorney from Havereton, so it went away pretty quickly. I just want to be sure that we're not going to get laughed out of town again. Thank you.
Is there any additional public comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion, ordinance passes. Yeah, just an introduction. We still have to introduce it. Motion passes unanimously. Ordinance number 2020-20 is introduced. Ordinance number 2020-21, introduction. Approving a cable franchise agreement for a 10-year term between Radnor Township and Comcast of Southeastern Pennsylvania LLC. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Can you lead us in on this, John?
I will summarize, you know, where we are on this. As you know, the board did have an executive session with your legal counsel, Mr. Cohen, who negotiated this on behalf of the township. This has been an ongoing, I got to think, six to eight years process involving this franchise agreement. You all, I believe, received his executive summary that describes, you know, what the primary terms are. This is, township currently assesses, I'll just summarize some of the major points in here. There's a 5% fee currently assessed by the township on gross revenues, that's remaining unchanged. You can't increase that under federal law. It's pretty much capped at 5%. The, there's also an accountability provision regarding the fee, where the township has the ability to conduct an independent audit of Comcast records. That's a new provision in your cable ordinance. There is, the issue of peg channels is being addressed in this. Comcast has agreed to distribute one of the peg channels in high def. There's got to be a decision basically made on that within 90 days of the agreement, which would be whenever you adopt it by ordinance. There is a peg capital grant involving this. Comcast has agreed to pay the township 1.75% of its gross revenues on a quarterly basis. And then that's the equivalent, based on 2019 revenues, of $123,561, which is equivalent to the amount that Comcast paid in 19 for peg support and rent for the RS21 studio. Mr. Cohen also has a summary of, you know, what these funds can be used for, their capital costs. It can't be used for operating costs. That is a federal law requirement. In, there's right-of-way protections involving townships' right-of-way and a procedure where Comcast, upon notice, has agreed to repair any damage within 20 days. There's also some standards in here to deal with the ongoing wire problem that we have in the community, in every community, hanging wires and things that are Comcast's to fix. So there's a procedure that addresses that, which was not in your current agreement. And then there's some community service standards, which include things like telephone answering, time limits for service reps, time limits for commencing installation, service interruption and repair work, a four-hour appointment window for service calls, a new customer complaint procedures, requirements that have to be met prior to disconnecting service, and credit for service interruptions of six hours or more. These are all things that don't currently exist. Section seven deals with service to community facilities. The FCC has basically struck the free cable telephone service to township buildings, schools, and libraries. It's a restriction that basically lets those costs be offset against the franchise fees if that's still going to occur. And for anyone that's following this, this is in paragraph seven of the executive summary that Mr. Cohen provided. There's also, and that order is also being challenged in federal court, so that could change. There are some reporting requirements that have to be met by Comcast to the township. There are some technical requirements dealing with the system itself and service areas, which basically deal with, at what point does Comcast have to provide a cable service in terms of minimum number of dwelling units per lineal foot? And that's in section nine of the summary. And then there's some other requirements in here regarding liquidated damages, performance bond. The length is a 10-year term. And there's a competitive equity provision. Comcast insisted upon a provision which basically states that if the township grants another cable franchise and the material terms of the new franchise are more favorable, then Comcast can request an amendment to the agreement to include similar terms. So, this world is changing, and it's changed a lot over the past six to eight years. You engaged Dan Cohen about three or four years ago to take this and to get it to the finish line. I think we're there. Tonight's introduction, this will be up for a public hearing at your next meeting. And I have to tell you, I'm not the cable franchise legal expert, but I know most of the issues that come up, although there's some new issues now because of the nature of the business. But that's what's in front of you for introduction. And if there's some questions that the board has either tonight or between now and when this is advertised, we may want to get Dan Cohen involved, but for tonight's purpose, I didn't think it was really necessary, since the board had had the executive session and he had given the summary, which I think is a pretty well-written, pretty thorough executive summary.
Is there any Commissioner comment?
John, I received the summary today via email from your office. Was this handed out to the other board members at the last executive session when I was away? In a hard copy, because I could not find it as being distributed from Dan Cohen via email.
I think that summary and ordinance was distributed, remember we had. Remember, we had a previous executive session that got canceled because of a technical problem, and I think it was distributed at that meeting. So that would have been two executive sessions ago, I believe.
I just checked my, I couldn't find it.
And it was distributed probably from the township, not from Dan Cohen.
In any event, I have it now, so thank you. It says a 5% fee, right, franchise fee, and then 1.75% fee is the gross receipts, which is limited to capital. What's the, what's the, is the 5% a separate charge, right?
Yes.
Which can be used for anything?
Yeah.
And that's, 5% of the gross revenues, that's, we use that for anything? The issue was always with the fees, that we'd be able to use a portion of the fee for rent for the cable channel, which would be the public, let's, educational and government. So it would be the public piece of it, right? So is there money to pay the rent, or is it all got to be capital now?
Well, the $123,561 is the.
The way I read this, it said it's all, you get $123,000, and it's all for capital, cannot be used for operating.
Correct. And that's a federal law issue.
Well, what's the 5% then?
5% is your franchise fee of gross revenues. That's over and above the peg grant. That's in addition to.
It's not clear in the summary that that's, I think that that's right, but there wouldn't be any such restriction on that 5%.
Correct. That's up to the township to determine how that's used.
And my question is, does that suffice for the operating that we were concerned about?
It's up to the board to make that decision. I mean, both of those pots of money, you know, or it's really up to the board to decide how they get distributed and in what manner.
Why only one channel that's high def? We need, why, we, how are we going to pick one? What one, what one is it going to be? This one?
No, not this one. Nobody needs to see us in high def.
Well, I mean, why, I mean, which, you know, we should have at least two. Why does it cost more to have, why is one specified instead of two or all three?
This was something that we discussed in executive session with counsel. It's not privileged, though. The reason that they are pushing back on high def is because Comcast's system of distribution limits high def in a way that Verizon's does not.
Bandwidth.
That makes sense, but again, but how are we going to pick? Right? It's going to be, it's going to be a problem.
You have.
Okay, all right.
Seven commissioners that have to make a decision on that.
And then on the final provision, the competitive equity provision, I haven't heard that term before. Currently, we're okay with the Verizon one? Is that going to cause a problem currently with, in other words, from the start, we're okay with this? We don't need to, it's not something that we're going to address?
No. It says if it grants another, a new, a future cable franchise, I think Verizon is actually come, I think that's coming up soon, within the next year? Because Verizon is, there's groups of municipalities in different counties that.
Right.
I know Montgomery County just did a deal with Verizon. So yours is coming up in the next year or two.
If Verizon gets a worse deal, could we renegotiate with them to put them with the same, to put them on par with Verizon?
I don't think so.
Why not?
I'll ask Mr. Cohen whether it can go the other way.
I mean, it goes one way. It's a one-way provision. I, you know, I wouldn't do it, I would say it goes either way. I would like to, we have Vince Shelley is here. I did not have a chance to reach out to the board on RS, the Radnor Studio 21, which is what I'm calling it, Vince, because we never really came before us to change the name. But I want to make sure those guys are okay, because I don't think that, I think that there might be an issue. If not, then I want them to say that this is, Jack Brooks and Art Hartel, if they're going to say it's okay.
They're here, they can speak for themselves.
So I think, are we calling for public comment? Is there any more Commissioner comment?
No, we're not done with Commissioner comment yet.
Yeah. So I just wanted to ask, so John, you noted that there are many provisions in here around, you know, protections for consumers and information for consumers and the way, how are we, you know, assuming this passes, how will we communicate that out to the consumers? Is there a way that we can let people know that we've got this new agreement and that there are, you know, various subscriber complaint procedures and things that Comcast has agreed to? Because certainly people have a lot of complaints, I think, a lot of times with the cable companies.
I mean, what I would suggest, and I'm just looking at the executive summary, on page four, there's a list, bullet points of the customer service standard, so I think you start with that. And then whatever else is appropriate to put on the township's website once this is approved, so that it's, you know, and then the documents itself should be on the website, the ordinance, the agreement itself. So I think that would be the way to do it.
Are there aspects of that executive summary we could put up that are easier, simpler to read? Is that something you could identify, or?
I think, I mean, this is a attorney-client communication, so it's not for public dissemination, but we can pull out of this and out of the ordinance itself, a summary of the things that he's highlighted in there.
Good. You know, I would, I want the, you know, the community to be aware and.
Sure, sure.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Public comment, you're up.
I guess my main question is, the Citizens Communication Council exists to review this document, this agreement. Should it not be considered? Should it not be going to the council? Especially since Art Hartel, who was, had a role in crafting the original franchise agreement? He's the chair of that committee, that council?
I mean, that. So we can't do back and forth with you. Public comment is your opportunity to speak to the board. I hear you saying you would like this to go to the Citizens Communications Council.
Correct.
Understood. Okay.
Is that possible?
Again, we really can't do a back and forth with you or we answer your questions.
I'll send it to him.
Okay. I've already forwarded to Art, so, I mean, it should be considered, as I understand what the. what the council exists for, it should be going to the council to advise this board where to go next, or where it should be thinking about, or what it should know about the, what's in the agreement.
So it's a public agreement. It was in the packet. Anybody, anybody could look at it.
Yeah, the agreement, agreement can be released to the public. If there's comments before it comes back to the board. This was in front of the council a long time ago. Not this exact agreement, but the original agreement from Comcast was in front of that group probably before your time. I mean, there's, and it was take, it was pulled back from that group, and then, you know, Mr. Cohen got involved. So it has been there, if we want to call it, not this particular document, but they certainly, you know, can take a look at it and comment on it. It's going to be advertised. It's likely it'll be your next meeting or your first meeting in December. So it'll be, there'll be a public hearing also for anybody to comment on the adoption of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to one. Moving on to item 3H, conditional use application, Stratford Road, Hamilton Estate. Motion to set date for conditional use hearing on December 10th, 2020, 6:30 PM. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
So by way of reminder, the board has decided that it is going to hear the conditional use application for the Stratford Road, Hamilton Estate development, which is going to be before us at some date. We are required to set a date within a time limit that has been extended by the applicant. We have circulated doodle poll amongst ourselves to find a date when we are free. It seems like December 10th is, I'm assuming, the one that is most available to all of us. Is there any commissioner comment? Hearing none, is there any staff comment? Hearing none, is there any public comment? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Mark your calendars, December 10th. Passes unanimously. Reports of standing committees of the board, item four.
I just have one from the library. So Radnor Library's Elves for the Shelves, which is usually a 5K run, has pivoted due to COVID, and they are doing a virtual move-a-thon that starts this Saturday, so, and runs through Saturday, December 5th. You can sign up, and you can run, or walk, or bike, do a 5K, do it one day, do it three days, do it the whole week, whatever, or three weeks. But it raises money to support the library. So there is a distance challenge, and there is a 5K run. There are prizes, and there is swag. So they are looking for people to sign up. It's $25 to register. There's, they're also seeking donations and sponsors if you're interested. There is a race website. You can access it through the lab, radnorlibrary.org website. And then you will, once you sign up, you'll download, there's an app you'll be reporting to, so it is kind of like a competition as well. So we've done a couple of these through my work, and they're fun. So I would encourage everyone to sign up and support the library as they are working to still raise money in these crazy times.
Thank you. Are there any other reports of standing committees of the board? Is there any new business?
I got three things for new business. The first is there will be a town hall meeting here tomorrow at 6:30 for Ward 7. We're going to talk about the Garrett Hill overlay as well as some traffic, traffic issues. I would personally like to thank Bill White. Thank you for making sure that letters went out there, emails went out there, as well as Peggy, I really appreciate your help, and Molly, I guess she left, but she did a great job putting it on the website. So I appreciate your support. I know that the residents are going to appreciate it, and it's just going to be a conversation. That's number one. Number two, as, as y'all know, that the underpass is closed in Garrett, in Garrett Hill, and that is causing some stress to some of the businesses for the next couple of weeks. So I don't know. Commissioner Barowski brought this up with me earlier today, if there's anything that we can do to help that business district, because it's kind of like a dead end at this point. So I will certainly do what I can on social media to let everyone know it's COVID, the road's closed, but, you know, they, you know, you know, they're, you know, they're still open for business. So do you have any ideas?
Well, I can, I can tell you that, and I'll give credit to, to Mr. Norsini and Chief Flanagan, they got together after communicating with a couple of the business owners on those regards. We had signs made up that have been attached to the road closed detour signs that say Conestoga Road open to Garrett Hill businesses. And the police department put the, the electronic signboard out with the same message. So as you approach the road closed signs, you will see that the businesses are still open, and, and we make it clear that you can still get to those. Along those same lines, I have no problem, we can work with Molly and put something out through the township, just reminding folks that while the tunnel's closed, if you're, if you're not going to a Garrett Hill business, we need you to follow the PennDOT detour, but if, that businesses are open if you, if you need to get back there.
Thank, thank you for that.
Sure.
And then finally, and I spoke to Steve Norsini about this, but Election Day, there was a terrible amount of traffic. It was on county line. And again, thank you, Mr. White, as well as Steve Norsini, for having them delay the bridge closure till a day after the election. But it just seems that no matter where you go, there is roadwork. I don't know if it's an ordinance, or it's something that we do talk to our state representatives, but, or if we're paying Miller Brothers or whomever. If there is an election day, either primary or a general election, that there's no roadwork done. They get the day off, or it's factored into the contract. But when you are navigating through that and trying to get from one place to another, it's just cumbersome, and it really affects people voting. They have to stand in line, and then they have to spend another 20 minutes, half hour in traffic going two miles. It just, it negatively affects democracy, and I don't know if that's something that you could look at as an ordinance, or with the state reps, or no? You're shaking your head no. But just an idea.
Okay. We can always ask.
Ask.
But the, I mean, the work being done up on Lancaster that's causing the delays over on that side, that's a, as I understand, I think it's a PICO job in Lower Marion. So it's, it's not even technically within our jurisdiction.
Sure.
We can always reach out to our friends at PennDOT and ask for some, some leeway or some consideration.
But if we're paving a street?
If it's a township-run project, absolutely.
Then maybe, can we look at having them delayed, or just they're not going to lock, you know?
By matter of policy, we can control that.
Okay.
But as, as you know, and as most of the commissioners know with these projects around town, out of everything going on in Radnor Township right now, we own two projects. The street resurfacing, which is wrapping up, and the Garrett Hill Tunnel. The rest is all being done by utilities and state.
All right. Maybe it just hit me right with, where I see Rockingham is closed off in Beaufort, where you're doing some street repaving, as well as the underpass.
Yeah, I mean, and, and that was all, I mean, the tunnel project was considered earlier in the summer, but due to the closure on Roberts Road and Brimmar because of the, the culvert replacements there, like, there was never a good time. So it just got stacked up.
Okay, well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Is there any additional old business? Hearing none, I will call for the final public participation. Seeing none, I will call for adjournment. Is there a second? All in favor say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.